Ladies and gentlemen.
So, good morning, everybody. We welcome you to the April 26, 2022 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Alex Thomas from Olivet United Methodist Church in Lusby if he could come forward and give us, oh, sorry, she, give us an invocation. Thank you.
Of course. Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pastor Alex Thomas of Olivet United Methodist Church in Lusby, and on Sunday mornings, I always invite the congregation to take a deep breath before we pray. I don't think we do enough of that in our lives, so let us all take a deep breath together. Let us pray. Loving God, those of us gathered here give you thanks that we are together this day. God, you do not reside in churches. You are everywhere, in all corners of our community of Calvert County. So much connects us, from the roads we drive, to the food we buy, to the mail we receive, to how our electricity powers most of what we do. That includes all of us, children, adults, and the elderly. As we continue to care for ourselves and one another in responsible and conscientious ways, we ask that you continue to guide us and reveal to us all that brings us together. May our communities be assured that our leaders are working hard, often behind the scenes, to support all that needs to be supported and celebrate all that should be celebrated, especially today, the long history of Christchurch. We thank you that you have gifted our leaders and please provide them help and guidance as they make important and impactful decisions. I ask this morning, God, that you give them the stamina to approach these decisions with emboldened hearts and minds. This is necessary and sometimes tiring work, and also work that is often joyful and rewarding. May it be so. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you, Pastor Thomas. We appreciate you coming in and help us, guide us this morning. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is to approve or the agenda as presented, or are there any amendments, changes, modifications, motions?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Have a motion and second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So, public service announcements today. First, I want to apologize. I have hay fever, and it's terrible. My head's stopped up, and I heard on TV that this is the worst pollen season they have on record, so I don't feel quite so bad, but it's been pretty bad for me for the past week. And all those out there suffering from hay fever, I feel your pain. The only other public service announcement I have is Comcast has made some changes to the channels on their, if you've noticed, and our Channel 6 is no longer the Calver County station. It's now 1070, so we'll be doing some promotional work to make sure that people out there understand that that's not Channel 6 anymore. It's Channel 1070, so that's all I have. Next item on the agenda is proclamations. The first item on the under-proclamations is Patuxent High School. They've got held up. I don't know if it's traffic or what the issue is, but the high school's not quite here yet, so we're going to go to number two, which is Commissioner McConkey. Historic Preservation Month.
I think they're late because they ran into some heavy pollen down south.
Well, then, they're excused.
Is anybody here for the historic preservation that would like to come up?
All right, Ms. Kirsty.
I believe you're coming back out of retirement to come back to work, correct?
No.
All right. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say a few words. Thank you. My name is Kirsty Orne Laugh. I used to be him. Or he is now me. Regardless, the two of us together have been the historic preservation planners for Calvert County now for about 30 years. Twenty-eight of those were mine. I want to thank you, this Board of County Commissioners, and all the other boards that I had the privilege to serve through those years, for your support of the heritage of Calvert County and your understanding that it underpins all the development that ensues, the respect of that heritage and of that history, and the communication of it to all the new people who have come to join us here in this beautiful place. I really thank Chris for pinging me to come and make another appearance before you this last time to accept the award, but in truth, just as I could not do my job on my own, I cannot accept a proclamation on my own. So instead, I would like to accept it on behalf of the Calvert County Historical Society, which I now serve as a volunteer. They are the keepers of the heritage that the county respects, treasures, and finds ways to investigate and protect. So, with that said, please.
All right. If you guys would like to come up, or did you want to say a few words? No? All right, come on. I'll read the spot for proclamations. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livable and encouraging tourism. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicating, dedicated individuals to help preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people. And whereas National Preservation Month is designed to encourage residents to visit historic sites that make our communities meaningful places to live. And whereas National Preservation Month 2022 is co-sponsored by the Calver County Historic District Commission, the Calver County Historic Society, the Calver County Heritage Committee, the Maryland Historical Trust, and National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of May 2022 be known as Historic Preservation Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we call upon the residents of Calver County to join their fellow citizens across Maryland and the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance given under our hands and seal this 26th day of April 2022.
One note, if I may take a moment of privilege on my way out. Please come visit the Calvert County Historical Society at 70 Church Street, Linden. You might be surprised at what's happening inside and what's going on there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next proclamation on the agenda is for Christchurch. We have some members from Christchurch here, right?
Good morning. I'm Christopher Garcia. I'm the rector at Christchurch in Port Republic. Christchurch has been worshiping here in Calver County since 1672. We have a record of a baptism that took place last Sunday, 350 years ago, in our church records, which tells us that there was a church here, there was a vestry here, there was a congregation here that kept records, and that congregation has continued to worship and serve the county for 350 years. Early in the county's history, the Vestry of Christchurch performed the functions that the county commissioners now serve, maintaining public morals, providing relief to orphans and widows, those sorts of things, in addition to having a worshiping congregation. So, we're very happy to be together, to have been, to have been a worshiping congregation for that long. We have a number of events throughout this year celebrating our 350th anniversary, including a community festival on Saturday, the 4th of June, a worship service on Sunday, the 5th of June, to which everybody's invited. Thank you.
Anybody else? You can come on up. And anybody else that wants to come up can come on up. So, morning. So, before I read the proclamation, those of you that may not know, Christchurch is located on Brumson Island Road, right off of Route 4. Every year, they hold a jousting tournament. They've been doing that for about 150 years or more. Ms. Zen, how many years has it been? 155. I was pretty darn close. All right. And I think the only year you've ever missed is COVID, right? Missed one year because of COVID. Other than that, that tournament has gone on.
If we could just kind of turn it.
So, y'all are going to have to short people in front, tall people in the back, and double up there. And I've been told, you can verify this, I've been told that way back when, 350 years ago, the state approved churches, and the parish had tied so many pounds of tobacco before the church would approve, the state would approve the church. How many pounds was it? It was, it was a pretty sizable amount, especially considering what I know about tobacco farming and the yield back then. It was, it was a large amount of tobacco that people tied to that church to make sure it got built 350 years ago. So, 40 pounds, 40 pounds. So, that just shows the history for tobacco for the state of Maryland and especially Calver County, that back in those days, it was the currency of the day, and it's what, it's what this county ran on in this state. So, that's why we have it on our flag. So, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas, Christchurch in Port Republic, Maryland will celebrate its 350th anniversary on April 24, 2022. And whereas, Christchurch traces its beginnings to a parish registry entry on April 24, 1672, recording the baptism of a child, Mary Miles. And whereas, the current rector, Reverend Christopher Garcia, continues the legacy and vision of the church's ancestors by spreading the word of God and worshiping with the older, continuous church congregation in Calver County. And whereas, this remarkable landmark and exceptional servitude unto God is cause for commemoration. We acknowledge the mission of Christchurch and the impact it has on our community and the citizens of Calver County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that recognition is hereby extended to Christchurch in affirmation of the congregated and holy institution of their 350th anniversary. Be it further proclaimed that this action shall stand as a tribute to the strength and stability which they represent, given under our hands and seal this 26th day of April 2022, signed by all five. And I'll put a plug in. If you've never been to the tournament, it's usually the weekend before Labor Day. It's a great event, and they have a great dinner. So, make sure you do that.
Last Saturday in Austin.
Last Saturday in Austin. Just for Labor Day. All right, we're going to take a little picture. Thank you. Thank you all for coming in today. Absolutely. I'll see you on the 4th. June 4th. June 4th.
The dog walks him, actually.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. So, the next item on the agenda under proclamations is Commissioner Wiem's Election Heroes.
All right. Election heroes, come forward.
Team Purple.
Team Purple. Should I get up too?
Sure.
The rest of you can move forward. Please come forward.
Mark.
Introduce yourself.
Can I, can I say a couple thank yous first?
Of course. You, you may, madam.
Thank you, sir. First off, for as under election heroes, we cannot do this ourselves. You know, that's the number one thing. I would also like to thank the election judges, the election judges who put their health needs aside to assist our voters, you know, during the pandemic election. Our county commissioners, without your support, we never would have got through this. We, we needed all your support, the county government, everything behind that. The League of Women Voters, they are always supporting us, always there when we need them. We appreciate them, and also the central committees. They've been there for us throughout the whole election. Mark, Mark Willis, Linda, without you guys being there, checking up on us, seeing what was going on, what we needed to get done, when it needed to be done, couldn't have done it without you. So, I appreciate that. Buildings and grounds, I mean, here we are, we're going through the county government list, right? Buildings and grounds, parks and rec. They came up with the tents. They put tents out there in that pouring down rain for those voters that were standing in those long lines out there. They sent their custodian services. Wayne, he mopped the floors all day long to keep the floors dry, to keep no voters from tripping or falling or slipping. Virginia, she kept the bathrooms clean. I mean, these are little things you don't think of, but without them, they made it such a, you know, a better election for our voters. The Sheriff's Department, we had them for the traffic, the security, you know, the parking lot mess, the streets, everything. Community Resources, even they, they even had to go find toner for us. We ran out of toner. I mean, there's, there's just little things that helped us along the way. The media relations, Sarah running the interface for us on Election Day, Kevin and Terrell, the online training for judges, because we couldn't do it in person. We had to do things online. Human Resources, they helped us to get out there and find some temporary help. I mean, we had a hard time finding that. And also, I would be remiss if I did not mention, finally, I want to thank our beloved employee, Gary Kendricks, who lost his life during the pandemic. His experience in the voting systems was beyond words, and we still miss him in the office today. So, basically, it takes an entire team, I say team, to put on election, and it shows that our county government is just that. We are one large team, one giant team, working together for the betterment of our Calver County voters and citizens. So, I want to thank you for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Gladys White. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Calver County, and our main purpose is to educate the public about the election process and to help register people to vote. We have worked very closely with Gail at her office, and I would like to thank you for recognizing our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Please come forward. So, we have an election season, and you've heard all the logistics that go behind each cycle. I want to have a little fun. I'm not coming back, so I want, I want everyone that is running in the room to raise your hand. How about stand up? Stand up. I thank you all, the citizens of Calver County. I'll thank you as well, and I wish all of you best. And logistically, thank you all for all you do, Ms. Gail. Thank you for indulging me. Whereas, the League of Women Voters of the United States recognize April 12, 2022, as Thank Election Heroes Day of Action. And whereas, Americans across race, place, and party believe in the freedom to decide for ourselves who represents us. In the face of a pandemic and heightened partisanship, Americans have still turned out to cast their ballots and to have their voices heard. And whereas, voting in election is how we, the people, have a say in the decisions that impact our lives, from the jobs in our communities to the healthcare we have access to. Election workers are essential workers that support our communities, just like nurses, grocery store workers, letter carriers, and firefighters. And whereas, our republic depends on our election workers. Throughout the pandemic, election workers have sacrificed their own health and safety so that we are able to cast our votes, and they work extra hours to ensure that every vote is counted accurately. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that we thank our election heroes. Can the gallery applaud for that? Be it further proclaimed that by this action, the Board of County Commissioners encourages all citizens to thank our election workers and let them know how grateful we are that they respect our strong election laws and count every vote, given under our hands and seal this 26th day of April 2022. There you are.
We got your back.
We got my back. We sure do. There you go.
Can you see the commissioner's shirt?
He got the memo.
Color-coded.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a bad election, too, so. Yes, I am. I appreciate all your support.
Anytime. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
We're good? Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So, the next item on the agenda is proclamations for the, and that's Commissioner Mike Hart, and it's the Patuxent High School Harlequins State Championship. I'll let him do the rest.
Well, good morning. Good seeing everybody. Would everybody like to, one at a time, come up, say your name, and come on up to the front porch?
Come on, you're not shy. You're in the theater group.
Hello, my name is Jenna Stahl.
Come on up. We're going to take a picture. We don't bite.
Hi, my name is Reagan Corliss.
Hi, my name is Karen Gray.
Hi, I'm Alan Price.
Anne Rickwood, Assistant Principal.
Hello, I'm Hermes Johns.
Hello, I'm Zachary Leclair.
Hi, I'm Brooke Beany.
Hi, I'm Julia Attwell.
Hi, I'm Micah Estep.
Hi, I'm Natalie Shipman.
Hello, I'm Hannah Bednall.
Hi, I'm Ella Ulri.
Hi, I'm Grace Gallagher.
I'm Rose Winter.
Hi, I'm Autumn Biddle.
Hi, I'm Alina Ashford.
Well, good morning. Very happy to see you guys, especially from my favorite part of town. So, normally, I try to say something kind of humorous or funny to kind of lighten the mood, but I would be doing you a disservice because you actually have a treat sitting right here. So, with what you guys are doing, with acting and everything, we actually have a reel. Do you guys know Kevin Schmidt? If Kevin Schmidt would come up here? Ever seen maybe Cheaper by the Dozen? Maybe ever seen that movie?
Wait a minute, we needed that picture.
Hello, 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 hello.
Maybe some Words of West, though.
I appreciate that, Mike. On the spot. You know what's kind of cool? I joined the team here three years ago in February, and I think it was like my second the OCC meeting. The Harlequins won an award. I don't know if it was the same competition, but it was three years ago. And Mike's like, hey, will you come up and, and talk, because I spent 22 years acting in Los Angeles. Because I spent 22 years acting in Los Angeles. Today, at this moment, I would just say this. Your passion in your craft is about connection and the human condition, and that awareness and that art can transcend any career, right? So I started off as an actor, but I was always passionate about writing and directing, and I came into business and communications and government, can literally go anywhere. Director of Community Resources, Jen Moreland, was a theater major, and now she controls and manages the community resources for the entire county. So your ability to connect, to tell a story, to be empathetic, can touch anything. So congratulations on your accomplishment and enjoy the ride.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. I don't think there would be a better gift than that, huh? So, yes.
The moral of the story, you can come back and work for the county government.
All right. Well, once again, thank you so much for coming. And whereas the Patuxent High School Harlequins won the Chapter Select One Act Festival State Championship at the 2022 Maryland Thespian Festival for their production of the one act version of Love, Loss, and What I Wore by Nora Ephron and Della Ephron, based on a book by Eileen Beckerman. And whereas the Patuxent High School Harlequins have been invited to represent the state of Maryland at the 2022 International Thespian Festival held in Bloomington, Indiana in June of 2022. And whereas the Patuxent High School Harlequins are led by Director Alan Price and Student Director Brooke Barn, Bany? And whereas the Patuxent High School Harlequins have maintained a consistent standard of excellence in the field of theater arts and represent Calvert County Public Schools with professionalism, dedication to their craft. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that congratulations are hereby extended to the Patuxent High School Harlequins on winning the Chapter Select One Act Festival State Championship. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County joins with the community to wish them continued success in their future endeavors, given under our hands and seal this 26th day, April 26th, signed by all five commissioners.
And your pictures will actually be taken by Kevin?
All right, you need to scooch in as much as you can. And then make sure you can see the lens or it can't see you, okay? Here we go. One, two, one more. Awesome.
Good morning.
It's going to take us a minute to readjust, and I haven't been keeping track this year, but we've had more state champions come through this room this year than I think we ever have. Yes, we are. So the next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo.
Good morning, Commissioners, Linda Vasallo. We have two rounds of appointments this morning. The first one is for the Commission on Aging, and the staff is requesting that the Board appoint Sheila Poole, Sarah Strauss, Sarah Simmons, and Linda Poudre. And once you do, hopefully I got that right, and once you do that, we'll have one vacancy remaining.
Move to approve, Mr. Brennan.
Second. Have a motion in a second that we appoint Sheila Poole, Sarah Strauss, Sarah Simmons, and Linda Poudre, if that's correct. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and your, your second and final appointment is for the Soil Conservation Board, and we're asking that you appoint Benson Terrillo as recommended by the Chair of Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second. So my note says something different. My notes talk about Benson Terrillo?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry.
That's what mine has.
All right, thank you. I'm having a pollen moment. There's a motion in a second that we appoint Benson Terrillo to the Calvert County Soil Conservation District Board as recommended by their chair. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Our Director of Soil Conservation got a little nervous there in the audience.
Well, it's not him, it's me. So, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The first one, that was supposed to be today but was removed, just, I'll mention that in case anybody was looking at our agenda. We, today, the public hearing for the Sheriff's Office request for the Bearcat has been pushed forward to a later date. We'll advertise that at that time. Item number two under public hearings, Department of Public Safety Budget Adjustment 025 CIP. Mr. Jeffries, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Again, I'm Al Jeffrey, Deputy Director of Calvert County Department of Public Safety. Today, we are conducting a public hearing regarding the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. FEMA has approved the HMGP grant to acquire and demolish two at-risk properties in Calvert County. This is an award of $579,815 in accordance with the terms of the HMGP agreement and MOU. Awarded funds are for the acquisition and demolition of designated properties that have demonstrated repetitive losses and based on a cost-benefit analysis are most efficient to acquire and demolish. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is a coordinated effort between FEMA, Maryland Emergency Management, and the county and the property owners. This public hearing was duly advertised in the county newspaper for two consecutive weeks before the public hearing and Calvert County Government website as required by Section 5103(c) of the code. If you wish to provide comment on the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Public Hearing, please sign up using the sign-in sheet located just next to the commit, next to the county attorney on the podium. Or you can call 1-888-475-4499, or 1-877-853-25257, and press star nine when the floor is open for public comment on this specific item, as the county attorney identifies those numbers and calls, calls you for comment. Those calling in to speak on the Hazard Mitigation Grant Award must stay on the line and will have an opportunity to press star nine after the presentation is concluded. Background. On April 3rd, 2019, the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA approved Project FEMA DR 4261 Maryland 0018 for Calvert County to acquire and demolish two at-risk properties located at 12638 Cheyenne Trail, Lusby, and 8851 Bruins Island Road, Maryland, for the total project cost of $579,815. Discussion. These properties were determined through, through following FEMA project and application guidance to be at-risk repetitive loss properties. Through this FEMA process, it was determined that the acquisition and demolition of these properties was the most economical way to address these issues these properties are facing. The FEMA project will pay 75% of the cost of the acquisition and demolition of these properties up to the approved project total for each property. The other 25% of the cost is borne by the property owner, and the breakdown of these costs are reflected on the attached spreadsheet that was in, included with the presentation. No additional funding from the county is required for these projects. The county, as part of the application and approval process, has agreed to forward fund the FEMA portion of the project. As the work is completed and invoice is paid, we will submit a reimbursement request to FEMA through MEMA in order to recoup these funds expended by the county for this project. Fiscal impact. There is no fiscal impact to the county on the purchase of these properties. There will be a small impact to be determined for maintaining the properties until we decide what we're going to do with them. Conclusion and recommendation. The Department of Public Safety, following the acceptance of any public comment, request a motion to close the record, approve and adopt a budget adjustment 025 CIP as submitted, and authorize the president to sign the contract to purchase the property located at 12638 Cheyenne Trail, Lusby, Maryland 20657.
No one has signed up in the room to speak. If there's anyone on the Zoom call that wishes to speak, please press star nine. Or if you're in the electronic Zoom meeting, raise your hand. Caller with the last four digits 0767. Please identify yourself and whether speaking as designated representative of a group or as an individual.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name's Paul Murdock. Um, I'm not here, I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I'm involved in my community, but I'm not here representing them or, or any association that I'm part of. My big thing here is, I, I, I just still really don't understand why the federal government, why we're using federal monies to bail people out of a bad property purchase. And then, a lot of these properties that are being purchased are in private communities. So we're using federal money through this, you know, enhanced county program to buy properties in private communities to help people out when they made a bad decision. And then, no one's going to have access to these properties because they're on private roads or other things. And this has been going on since 2019, and I heard in the presentation today, you're still not sure what you're going to do with these properties. So we're what, over $10 million into this? Between all the acquisitions? Is that correct?
It's an opportunity for you to provide comments, sir, not a question and answer.
Okay. So my comment is, what are, you know, what are you guys going to do to ensure that people have access to these properties? So, you know, my comments are, I think it's ridiculous that we're bailing out people. You should be responsible for your own purchases, bad decisions. The, the county doesn't seem to have a plan as to what to do with these properties. I, I just, I just don't understand the whole thing. I mean, originally, this whole FEMA program is supposed to buy out the worst properties in a certain area, you continue to buy them out, and then you turn it into a public use area. Instead, we're buying out selected properties all over the place because of erosion issues, and then we don't know what we're going to do with them. I think that's a fair statement, correct?
Okay, thank you, sir.
So where do I get a comment back from this? I heard something about a lawyer could possibly be following up.
You're more than welcome to reach out to Mr. Jeffrey, whose information is in the advertisement for today's public hearing. And there's no one else who has signed up to speak or raised their hand?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to close the record, approve and adopt budget adjustment 025 CIP as submitted, and authorize the Board President to sign the contract to purchase the property located at 12638 Cheyenne Trail, Lusby, Maryland 20657.
Second.
I'm sorry, do we have to do them separately, or they're the two properties combined? Motion's only to purchase the one.
Yeah, right now, there's only one property to purchase. The project and, the one project includes both properties. We're still working with the homeowner on the, on the purchase contract for that property. They're having, uh, they're, I'm waiting on them to get back to me.
So today, what we have before us is just the purchase.
Just the one property.
It will come back later, once they've worked out the details with the owner of the other property for that purchase agreement.
Thank you.
So I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? And that motion is to purchase the property at 12638 Cheyenne Trail in Lusby, and to close the record, just as a reminder. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So the third public hearing is for Department of Community Resources, the Calvert Library Budget Adjustment 052 CIP. Good morning, Director Moreland.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have Carrie Wilson, the Executive Director of Calvert Library here with me, and she'll be reading the memo.
Background. Twin Beaches Branch Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, was first adopted in fiscal year 2019. The projected cost for the new Twin Beaches branch in fiscal year 2022 is $10,101,97. The project's funding was spread over three fiscal years, FY's '21, '22, and '23. The project was bid in March of 2022, and due to increasing inflation, the lowest bid was over the projected cost by $2,285,983. As of FY '22, the Twin Beaches branch CIP has $4,868,987 in construction and will need $6,253,014 to cover the project's lowest bid. The project has been awarded a total of $2.3 million in state library capital grant funding, and an additional $2.5 million grant is in the governor's budget for FY '23. When this funding is awarded, the Twin Beaches branch will have received a total of $4.8 million in state library capital grant monies. The Twin Beaches Branch Library Project is also supported by the Calvert Library Foundation, which has contributed $145,000 and is planning a campaign to raise additional funds to help offset the total construction costs. Discussion. The Department of Finance and Budget has proposed that the general fund's prior-year fund balance be used as a placeholder until the FY '23 grant award of $2.5 million is received. Finance and Budget and the library are also requesting an increase in the FY '22 Twin Beaches CIP General Obligation Bonds Budget of $3,753,014. The Twin Beaches branch has $4,743,316 in authority, therefore covering the FY '22 increase to the general obligation bonds debt. By forward funding this project $6,253,014, the county can award the project to the lowest bidder and move forward with the construction of the library. Fiscal impact. The fiscal impact includes an increase to the general fund prior-year fund balance of $2.5 million to fund the increase in the project's general fund PGO for that $2.5 million, that'd be account 461206060. And general obligation bonds, an account 461206055, will be increased by $3,753,014 for a total project increase of $6,253,014. The FY '23 CIP budget will reduce the PGO and increase the grant portion of the project for the $2.5 million. Conclusion and recommendation. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners close the record, approve budget adjustment 052 CIP, and sign the attached resolution.
So the action today is just to forward fund, so you can go ahead and sign the contract?
That's correct.
Yes.
The fiscal year '23 CIP.
Right. Because at the state we're in today, the bids are only good for so long. And what we don't want to do, we believe this bid is
Sound.
Good, and we don't want to have to rebid.
Correct.
We're concerned about what might happen if we rebid. So just so everybody understands, there's a lot of numbers in there. You know, they've done a good job of getting state grants and bonding authority to build this library, so we want to go ahead and get this moving. It's the purpose of today's action, so.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to close the record, approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we had to... And there are none. Thank you. Christian McConkey?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to close the record, approve budget adjustment 052 CIP, and sign the attached resolution.
Sorry. So I have a motion in a second, that we close the record, adopt and sign the resolution approving the budget adjustment. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Have a good day. So the next item under public hearings, today is public hearing day, if you hadn't noticed. Item number four, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment 176. Morning, Mr. Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Stat and citizens of Calvert County. My name's Tom Jones. I am the deputy director for DPW of General Services, and today I will be reading the memo about budget adjustment 176 for election board voting facility. Background, the Board of County Commissioners is directing the placement of a voting facility in District Three. The Department of Public Works General Services Division proposes Fairview Library at 8120 Southern Maryland Boulevard as that facility. Discussion. General Services worked with the election board to present a acceptable fully solution to meet their needs. The voting facility consists of a 65 by 24 readyplex ADA compliant trailer rental with fiber electric installation and an increased parking area with associated stormwater management. BPW General Services is requesting two transfers, first being $3,700...
$300.
$373,615 from the record, recordation tax. The second would be $3,385 from the security upgrade capital improvement project. Physical impact. The security upgrade CIP budget will decrease by $3,385, and the recordation tax will decrease by $373,615. The new CIP project election board Fairview will increase by $377,000. Conclusion and recommendations. Staff recommends that after reviewing public comment, the VOCC take action to close the record and approve budget adjustment number 176 for $377,000 to the election board Fairview CIP to initiate the, the emplacement of a new election facilities.
So, Mr. Norris, can I take a moment? We, we have Mrs. Hadfield in the audience, who's the director of elections, and there's going to be a change this year, and I just, if she wanted to take a moment and come up to the microphone and explain what's going on here, so people that may not know, know what's, what we're doing here?
Yes, you're talking about adding in a third...
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Gail Hadfield, the elections administrator here for Calvert County. Yes, this year will be some changes, in fact, a lot of changes will be going on this year. But concerning this budget adjustment, we are going to be adding two more early vote sites to our county. So instead of voters only having one place to go, which is Prince Frederick, we will now have an early vote site open to the public in Southern Community Center, which will be done in the southern end. And then for the northern end, that was the difficult finding of place. That's why we found the property behind the Fairview Library. So that is right there on Chaneyville Road, as you turn on Chaneyville Road. You're going to put a temporary building, from what I understand, for this election, but we will have voters use that temporary election, temporary building for early voting. So those that live in the northern end can now go to the Fairview, we're going to call it the Fairview Vote Center. So that's a new change, because there's going to be some, like Dunkirk and all of that area, that's where they're going to go to vote also. It's going to also be a polling place for Election Day. So we're going to use that as a polling place, too. Might as well use, we got it, we use it. So, and my understanding is then it's going to become a permanent place? Is that what the, this, the, the high dollar amount is? No? That's just to put the temporary trailer there?
For right now, that's just to place a trailer there for this election cycle. We haven't, I don't think we believe we've made a determination for...
For...
Permanent.
Okay.
Yep.
But we, we know that we will have something for our northern end voters. Let's just put that out there, so, yes.
Yes.
So I hope that the people that live in the northern end will utilize this, because this is to help cut back on those lines and get more people out to vote early.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, sir. Just to note, I did see in the budget adjustment, there is quite a bit of site work that's done with this as well, so it's not just rental. No one has signed up to speak. There are still callers and participants on Zoom. Please raise your hand or press star nine if you wish to speak. I see none.
Thank you. Action of the board.
Mr. President, I will make a motion to take action to close the record and approve budget adjustment number 176 for $377,000 to the election board Fairview CIP to initiate an emplacement of the new election facilities.
Is there a second? A motion in a second, that we close the record and adopt and sign the resolution approving budget adjustment 176. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Tom.
Next item on the agenda is another public hearing. I believe it's the last public hearing. Department of Public Works capacity options for Prince Frederick Service Area. Director Dahl.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Kerry Dahl, Director of Public Works. To my right. Go ahead, do your thing.
I'm James Ritter. I'm the deputy director of public works for enterprise funds.
Hi, good morning. I'm Amy Parish with Barton and La Judas. I'm a geologist.
And also, part of this presentation is going to be Mary Beth Cook from the Director for Planning and Zoning. Okay, gentlemen, I've got a presentation...
Mr. Dahl, you might have to move your microphone closer to you. These mics are sensitive. Thank you.
All right. I'll do better next time. There we go. Okay, so, presentation, I'd like to go ahead and present to you and the residents. Next, oh, that's right, I got this thing right here. Okay. The purpose of the presentation is essentially to present to the board and the residents and count the planning and concept development the water and sewer team has undertaken to increase capacity in Prince Frederick Service Area. We're going to go down by the numbers on the discussion points here. First of all, we're going to talk about the area's capacity. We're going to talk about what current development plans are currently in the works. We're going to assess trends of capacity for Prince Frederick Service Area. We're going to talk about requirements for planning and increasing the capacity, and we're going to go over options previously considered, options still remaining, and then we'll provide our recommendation. Okay, we began this deliberate planning effort in 2017. Right now, the Prince Frederick wastewater treatment plants are currently combined level at 68%, and that was from measured flows in 2021. If you recall, this was previously 71%, but we went back and checked and rechecked our efforts on actually measuring that capacity. The number we gave previously at 71 was premature. 68, 1%, 68% is the actual number. So what does that mean? That means we have 12% capacity before we get to a design threshold of 80%, okay? What does that mean as far as numbers? That's 450 EDUs, which is about 90,000 gallons per day. An EDU essentially is a unit measured by which the user is charged for sewer services, and one EDU equals 200 gallons per day. So if you look at the stuff that's in process, or the plans that are in process, we currently have 51 potential projects that are, that the staff is tracking. 24 don't even require an EDU. Those are because they're going to be on, on, on well water, they're going to be on septic systems, they're paving a parking lot, okay? They don't even, they don't even count towards EDU count. Seven site plan reviews tabulate to 267 EDUs, and 17 concept, concept site plan reviews account for 380 EDUs. There's three of those still remaining that are active with no development planned, unknown or EDU already counted against the totally allotted account that we have. So if you throw all that together, that's 647 that are in the planning stages, or at least looking at.
Can I ask you a quick question on that?
Sure.
So, how long did it take to go from 67% to 68%? How many years?
Sir, I'm going to cover that, actually, when I go through this. Okay, when I go to 2017 through 2021, I'm going to talk about that.
Okay, one more question, and you might have this in your presentation, too. At the amount of EDUs that you have in the project right now, what percentage do you expect it to go from, from 68 to what, with what you have on the books here?
I'm going to probably cover that, too, and I was probably going to answer your question, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if there's 647 EDU, EDUs that are out there, if we assign those all today and water started flowing and sewers started flowing, you would be at 85% capacity, which would be above the 80% threshold. But I'd like to point out that some of those projects are still in design, still in permitting, and still are, some of them are, a lot of them are still in concept. So the next thing I'd like to do is turn the next slide over to Mary Beth Cook and talk about stuff that's actually in the planning cycle.
Good morning, commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Planning and zoning staffed worked really hard to do a calculation of what's in the pipeline, what projects are currently in for review. This slide provides a description of those site plans currently submitted and under review. What it doesn't include is the time that it will take to get to final approval. That's unknown. Once you're submitted for a concept site plan, you could go back and forth on rounds of review between staff review of all county agencies, state agencies, and back to the engineer for them to address it several times. Several times could be two or three, or 11. It's just really unknown. So the pre-concept review and those in concept process are very early on in the process. They're just getting started. The concept, those that have concept approval will still have multiple rounds of review back and forth between the agencies and the engineering design firms before receiving final site plan approval. Those in the detailed site plan development review are further along in the review process, but will still have several rounds of comments to be reviewed till they get to their final site plan review. Once the site plans are approved, then permits must be submitted, reviewed, and then issued. Once you have the permit in hand, construction can begin, or not. Some projects sit with their site plan approval for many years. When construction starts, it could be a year or several years until the development would reach the point where it would impact the sewer capacity. Capacity won't increase until the building is occupied. Most projects are constructed in phases. Only part of the project will impact the sewer capacity at a time. So it could be several years, once they start occupying the building, until all of the buildout is complete, and then we would reach that 85% that Kerry just talked about. Back to you, Kerry.
Thank you. Okay, so what does crossing the 80% threshold mean? Okay? That's a requirement set by Maryland Department of Environment, and essentially, it's submit the wastewater, you, you submit the wastewater capacity management plan and municipal sewage capacity report to MDD for municipalities at 80% design capacity by 31 January of 2023, based on the three-year adjusted flow. So what does that mean? That means you cross 80%, and then you have to duplicate it for two more years. Okay? And so essentially, you have to make sure, and I'll show you in the, in the trend analysis that we tried to do, that we actually dropped down early on when we were measuring from 2017 to 2021. So I'm just saying that we have to duplicate the 80% level, or actually exceed that threshold for the next two years, once you cross it one year. And then yearly reports are required until available capacity is secured, or until MDE informs the municipality that the reports are no longer necessary. So based on the review of the facility performance, municipalities are expected to initiate measures such as operational changes to improve performance, planning schedules for facility upgrades if needed, and voluntary containment of building permit approvals. Those are all things that are required by Maryland Department of Environment. I would like to restate that we're currently at 68%, and we are currently looking at plans and schedules for facility upgrades if needed. So we're already in that planning phase for the simple fact that we need to go ahead, and we're trying to anticipate it earlier enough, before we get to the 80% threshold. So, took the flows from 2017 to 2021, we're currently at 68%. The green represents the current trend. The yellow represents the, the 80% threshold, and the red, of course, is at 100%. So when we look at the trend in green, if you noticed in 2018, it bumped up, and then in 2019, it bumped down, as far as the, the flows. Those were actual measured flows that we've recorded. Okay? If we continue on the current trend line, we're expecting to cross the third, the 80% threshold at 2030. So at 2030, then, we would have to duplicate that for two more years, roughly about 2032 is what we're expecting based on current trend. And when I did the trend, it came out to about 9,263 gallons per, per, per day increase over that, that span time. I bumped it up to 10,000, okay? Just to keep with round numbers. And then I put in, you know, okay, so I tried to measure, maybe it doesn't go trend, maybe it goes faster. So then I doubled it, and that's what the, the blue bars represent. And if we go to the blue bars, then we're crossing the 80% threshold at 2026. And again, at 2026, you would have to duplicate that effort for two more years, then to be put in that 80% design threshold required by MDE. So what I'm going to do now is hand it over to Amy, and we're going to talk about the options that were previously considered when we did the, the previous studies that we have worked on for water and sewer.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, the Prince Frederick area has two spray fields already, so we have an understanding that spray irrigation works here. So the, the options on the table that we're considering, because there are no rapid infiltration basins in Prince Frederick area, but there are in Solomons, were rapid infiltration basins. They are major land treatment technique for wastewater. There's a photo here, an illustration of infiltration basin. It consists of a shallow earthen basin constructed with a level bottom and berms on the side. The basin bottom is situated above very permeable soil, sands, gravels. The soil offers treatment by filtering, absorbing, and on exchange microbial action. However, in addition to the soil treating, these RIBs require wastewater treatment that is of a higher level than spray fields. So currently, the, the treatment at the spray fields in Prince Frederick would, would need, would need a change, too, to support. Basins are operated by flooding, ponding them, and allowing them to drain, and then rest in a cycle nature. The photo below the basin illustration shows a situation where infiltration in the basin free drains and then recharges groundwater, and then that groundwater returns to the surface water as base flow and streams. This is a, an map showing aerial, an aerial view, with the red areas showing Prince Frederick One and Prince Frederick Two Sprayfield. And then you can see the urban area between Prince Frederick One and Prince Frederick Two Sprayfields is the town. So we looked at potential to, on a scientific basis, this is the potential for permitting and developing rapid infiltration basins within three miles of Prince Frederick One Sprayfield. So you see a three-mile radius around that spray field in green. So one of the first considerations that we, that we looked at was the geology. If you'll notice, to the east of Prince Frederick One, the red, it's very green, and then you have gray colors. So if you can see that, the green is forested primarily, there's a lot of forested land. It's upland, elevated, and then we have urban areas. That was our primary focus for the geology there is called the upland gravel or Brandywine Formation. To the west, toward the Potuxent, you'll see that the land use is very different. There is more low-lying, closer to the Potuxent, and have more agricultural use. There's a planning-based reasons we didn't focus... To the west, toward the Patuxent, you'll see that the land use is very different. There is more low-lying, closer to the Patuxent, and have more agricultural use. There's a planning-based reasons. We didn't focus on the geology there, which is lowland geology. It does have capability to support rapid infiltration basins, but for other reasons scientifically it works, but not for other reasons. I'll get into that. So, our primary geology, we looked at upland gravel, Brandywine Formation. We then assessed soil mapping, United States Department of Ag, looking for excessively drained soils. Deep gravelly and sandy were the target. Our focus was, for topography, was on ridge tops and elevated area summits. The flatter, the better, so we do have slope limitations. Unlike spray can get up to 25% for rapid infiltration basins, constructability is an issue on a sloping terrain. So, all these features boil down to how thick is that sand and gravel material to support the rapid infiltration basins, and there's a minimum requirement there. So, we were looking at what soils might meet that minimum requirement, what geology and topography within three miles. General trends towards the south and towards the east favorable. The further south, the better, the thicker that sequence is. And Maryland Geological Survey has a, it's not shown on here, but they have a cross-section of deep drilled wells, and that also shows to be true as we work our way down towards the south. The upland gravel becomes very, much thicker. So, once we looked at scientific criteria within the three miles, we looked at land planning and whether it was feasible from a land planning perspective. The primary, first, we looked at land protection. Is the land unsuitable for ribs or spray irrigation? We didn't focus heavily on spray irrigation again. We know that works here. So, agriculture preservation, if you recall, to the west, towards Patuxent, a lot of agricultural land, mostly all preserved, really. They're mostly preserved with state or county preservation in place. So, a rapid infiltration basin would remove land from agriculture, so it's not a compatible land use. I have a asterisk around spray irrigation because Maryland does have one municipal spray system in agriculture. We preserve land, and that's Town of Walton in Kent County. So, it's not, there's not without risk to do spray irrigation on ag preservation. It can't affect, negatively impact the crop and the soil health. So, there's more operational considerations there for spraying on ag pres. The others listed transferred development rights or purchased development rights, forest conservation, rural legacy, private conservation, DNR owned lands and conservation easements are not suitable for either. The next we looked at was site access, focusing on a site that can be accessible without passing through residential neighborhoods. That was logistically, how do we get to the site, was a key consideration for site access. And then whether, the last, whether properties for sale already, are there known sale interests for those owners? So, after we had the big picture view of three miles, we had Prince Frederick I here pictured on this screen here. It's the outline of the spray field. You can see the lagoon, the body of, the bodies of water, the lagoons. There's a red pipeline coming in for main. So, the area that's sprayed currently at Prince Frederick I is northwest of those lagoons, and the area that's to the southeast is not in active spray currently. So, Prince Frederick I, the land owned by the county now offered a very study area, essentially. So, what we did was we looked at the soils and the geology and the landscape, and we tested the scientific criteria with real boots-on-the-ground observations on the site. So, that's the RIB feasibility stage for Prince Frederick I's own land that they own now. And in this map, you'll see 10 yellow boundaries, which are areas of interest that we focused a geo-probe evaluation. So, we punched probes and looked at the geology into the subsurface. And in doing so, of the 10 areas, we identified towards the south, four of the 10 as worthy of further study, detailed evaluations, more invasive testing to support what amount of discharge might be feasible, might be suitable for those areas. The rest, we did not study further, but that data collected, again, did validate our desktop criteria as a good tool to assess other properties where we don't yet have boots on the ground for acquisition. Okay, so it was really a key, key to have both those pieces. So, now we proceeded from feasibility to focusing on the four yellow areas towards the southeast. And in doing so, we evaluated the limiting condition here, which several slope, and where is the water table is an important consideration. So, below the sand and gravel deep, there's a transition to the chop tank and St. Mary's geology, which is where gravels drop out and, you know, silty or finer textured sediments. And at that, at that transition, any infiltrating water that's artificially recharged to a basin, to a rapid infiltration basin would pond. And the height of the ponding and extent that ponding might spread laterally was our focus of our detailed analysis. And when we looked at the potential for that ponding and lateral movement to keep every water, drop of water that's discharged under the ground, so it is recharging through that, into that St. Mary's and chop tank, and ultimately to the stream as base flow, we estimated that .095 million gallons per day on three acres would, could be achievable with the MDE permit. The four areas we had were about each an acre, so one of them was not yielding enough to really make it worthwhile. So, three of the four. MDE permitting negotiations are the next step. So, MDE has permitted RIBs before. There is Solomons, which differs here because that sandy gravel transition to the St. Mary's and chop tank is deeper. It's actually in the water table, not a ponding condition. The other place where there are rapid infiltration basins in St. Mary's County, and there, the basins are in lowland geology. So, if you recall, the agricultural land in the lowland, that's not as elevated. The water levels are closer to the surface. There, the limiting condition is different. It's a free draining water table, but the water table is shallow, okay? You have to keep a certain separation distance between your basin bottom and the water table for the permit, to be in compliance with the permit. So, MDE has not permitted our rapid infiltration basin in this particular geologic condition. So, we have some future steps with permitting here, potentially safety factors to scale up the flow to .095 million gallon per day and demonstrate operationally that its empirical observations support what we predict. So, the discharge permit, construction pilot phase might be a factor, might be needed and necessary, and that bumps timeframe down up to two to three years estimated to get a permit and get going with these rapid infiltration basins. There are still other options remaining, but the end result is that there will be additional land application areas needed to support more flow. To proceed, we would be able to assess desktop feasibility of lands that we didn't previously identify in the three miles or extend that land search beyond three miles to six miles. One option to look at is hybrid land application. So, the rapid infiltration basins are only situated on a portion of the land. There's a remainder land surrounding, even on the site Prince Frederick owns, there's surrounding land there that could be used as spray, so this hybrid approach. With the need for additional land application areas, we will be looking at Prince Frederick area needing decentralized wastewater distribution. So, there will be forced mains and multiple land application facilities. And again, because of the geology, we're targeting additional areas that are further south, south and east.
And so far, we haven't been able to identify any properties to date that can alleviate this. Is that correct? For additional land needed, have we identified a property?
We, we've, we've looked at properties.
But have we found one that will take care of these needs?
Not one in its own. There will be, there'll be, there'll be more than one property.
Right, but what I'm saying is, so it's obvious, it says options here, additional land is needed. Have we found that land?
We've identified land of interest, areas of interest that meet the criteria scientifically and the planning criteria.
And that will satisfy the additional need?
The need.
For the, for the additional, I mean, this looks according to this by 2030.
I think the land will support what it can support. Without those, you know, without more detailed evaluations, we would need to determine how much.
But we probably, but we don't have an answer right now. Right now, we're on a path that at 2030, we could exceed our limit. Is that correct? Is that what I'm reading?
That's, that's the estimate, sir. What we're getting at is, is that there's still analysis that needs to be done to actually come up with the final solution. We're not in a position right now and say that land will work. We still have to, you have to identify, do the desktop assessment, and then you have to furthermore go ahead and actually do the testing on the terrain to actually make sure that it's suitable.
So, my big concern is, we know how fast government moves. We have a six, six, seven, max eight-year window to try to address this to, to, so we don't have, I mean, after, after we hit over the top of 80, it's kinda, kinda getting a little late, isn't it, in the game? I mean, State of Maryland's requiring you to be at 80. I don't know if there's fees, fines, what have you, but, but at that point, we should have already had a plan, wouldn't you say?
We, this slide here is to discuss that for future timeframe of study for additional lands in addition to what has already been studied at Prince Frederick I.
Right, so three to seven-year study. And at the end of that study, we, say whatever recommendations were, it wouldn't happen that day. So, it'd be additional time. So, at that point, we're already at 2030. So, we're already at kinda like the timeline you guys had identified that we're already gonna be maxed out. But at that point, we might just be getting what the plan is.
It's a study and permitting. So, the permitting comes after the study. So, you have one study.
I'm aware of that, and then you go out to bid and you build it and all, and I got a golf course that's still ain't been built in five, six years. So, I know what it says on paper, but I just know what the eye test is. I've been here long enough to see how long it takes to do something. No disrespect to anybody in the room, it's just how long sometimes things take. So, to me, you need the plan in place before you get to 2030. You need the solution in place before you get to 2030. That would be the responsible thing to do.
And, and sir, I believe that's what we're doing. We are doing the responsible thing. We are doing the plan. We're at 68% right now.
But we don't, we haven't given you a lot of time, though, Carrie. If you've got a seven, eight-year window, then that's what it's about, taking you to get this plan together, wouldn't you say?
I'm saying that if you're looking at 2030 and then duplicating it over for the next two years, you're talking 2032. That's about a 10-year timeframe, max, that we're looking at right now, okay? But if we're looking at three to seven-year study with the permitting and everything, I believe that we're gonna be in a position, when we cross the 80% threshold, then go to construction and actually have a plan that's gonna increase the capacity requirements.
That's, you can find adequate piece of property.
Yes, sir, but then, but we're diligently looking for those properties to make that happen.
Okay.
Exactly, so some of the owner discussions are already in place and already happening to get access to additional lands. That next phase would be land feasibility, test pourings. Following that, if it's feasible, whether it's RIBs, we already know spray is gonna be feasible on these lands. If we can't do the RIBs, the RIBs are more desirable from an operational standpoint. So, the permitting studies would follow after feasibility, after access. All the while, we would still be working on Prince Frederick I and gaining more from the ground we already own, the rapid infiltration basins there and the remaining spray areas that aren't used for rapid infiltration basin. So, once we get through detailed evaluations, some of them have to be during winter and spring, certain times of year. We also have a wealth of data we can apply already from Prince Frederick I site that we can use to make analyses on additional off-site areas. And once you describe the geology in one place and its characteristics, that can be, that can be used elsewhere off-site nearby in same geology. Again, site evaluations for ribs can apply to spray evaluations, so. And the next step then is, well, maybe it's before site acquisition, either before or after our studies and groundwater discharge permits, going for a groundwater discharge permit with MDE based on all our evaluations.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Okay, so, gentlemen, our recommendation right now is this. I believe we should go ahead and continue to do the evaluation of available options. Just keep assessing the terrain, find out the right pieces of property, and continue that assessment. Then we have to essentially, you know, duplicate an effort in parallel is to create and apply an adequate public facility regulations to actually, that talks about sewer capacity in Prince Frederick. And thirdly, I believe that more frequent assessments to you are provided to give you updates so you can understand exactly where we are in the process, whether that be semi-annually, annually, quarterly. We'll let you guys decide on when you would like to see that, but we can give you where we are on a routine basis so you're more familiar with what's going on as far as the actual capacity issue itself. So, you'll know whether or not we are tracking at 10,000 gallons per day over a five-year period or whether we're actually going less than that or even more than that.
So, Director Cook, could you please talk about the adequate public facilities? Because in the current comprehensive plan, there was provision that we add water and sewer capacity as part of it. So, could you give us a timeline of when that could, would be in place?
Sure. So, currently, we have adequate public facilities for schools and roads that is in the Calver County zoning ordinance. And at your direction, with the adoption of the comprehensive plan in 2019, we added several more, including public safety, water and sewer, stormwater management, law enforcement, and I know I'm gonna forget one. But I've already started scheduling meetings. We've had two meetings with the directors and their staff to talk about getting this written. We're looking at a draft for our next meeting, at least bullet points of how they're planning to address each of their individual requirements for what they're responsible for under their department. And so, we're hoping to get something within the next two months, potentially to bring to you, to discuss, and then it would have to go through the adoption process. So, what we're physically doing is taking the adequate public facilities ordinance out of the zoning ordinance and putting it in the county code since we're expanding it to include many more types of facilities to be analyzed. So, you know, it would have to go through the normal public hearing process, but, you know, potentially by the end of the year, we could have a document.
So, to Commissioner Hart's point, I think the concern is that people come in, and as we know, it takes years to get through the process. I think that some of the concern is that once people get into concept, generally, we've allowed them, grandfathered them in through prior changes to zoning or whatever. I think that Commissioner's heart concern is that if people are allowed to come in and get through concept, and there's no connection between water and sewer, these people are already locked in and that they're gonna outrate the capacity before we can get it in place. So, that's why I just wanna make sure we understand the timeline. And when that's adopted, that would put in place a provision so that Planning and Zoning would tell someone coming in the door, "We don't have water and sewer taps for you. Even though you're not gonna build for five years, we've projected out, and we know we can only handle this much."
So, it would become part of the site plan or subdivision approval process, and it would actually be the department who's responsible for water and sewer, telling them that they don't have the taps available. They're, one of their review agencies. So, yeah, absolutely, we would not. We would not be able to complete the process for that review if the facilities aren't adequate.
And do those requirements for adequate public facilities have the same timeline as schools, that you can only hold the project up for five years?
That is going to be open for discussion when we bring the code forward.
So just trying to help Commissioner Card out with the word he's going.
The system, I don't want to get too far off topic, but part of the topic, like is traffic part of this whole consideration. Because, you know, I've always disagreed. The traffic study takes a 24-hour period. Well, we know where bedroom community traffic's anywhere four, five in the morning up to eight, then to three to seven. Anybody that has gone north from Prince Frederick has seen the line of cars. The study can say it passes, but it don't pass the eye test. We all know that. I mean, I've yet to meet anybody go, wow, it was an easy drive home. I've never heard it. I haven't heard it since I was a kid, except where when COVID and everybody worked from home. Wow, it was like the old days. There was nobody on the road, you know? So will, will this, will this include a more thorough traffic study? I mean, it's great. You know, you can make numbers, do anything you want them to do. You spray, you divide it by 24, and you get a much different number than if you divided by six or seven. Will this address that?
Yes. Everything's open for discussion. So Public Works is looking at the road section of the adequate public, the current road section of the adequate public facilities, and they'll be proposing changes to that as well, I'm sure.
So we don't get too far down that route. Well, we're going to be here enough with what we're doing today.
Yeah.
So just as a little bit of background, you know, we're here today because at a planning commission meeting several months ago, an employee said the system in Prince Frederick was failing. That is not a true statement, correct, Director Dahl?
Correct.
So the Prince Frederick sewer treatment plant is not failing, but they do realize that they have a capacity issue to get rid of gray water. It's treated water, correct?
Correct.
And what we're, and staff internally, looking at the most effective and efficient way to resolve that issue, talked about a plan to run a pipe from Prince Frederick to Solomon's. Because in that area, we have, we own a large amount of land that is perfect for ribs. So staff was just doing their job to find the most efficient and effective way to solve their problem. But when that came to light, there's not much popularity for that plan. And we asked you to go back and develop Plan B, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's why we're here today. And while discussion the first day was, you know, concerned about the urgency, at that time, we really didn't have all the facts. So every option was put out on the table for this hearing today. But the point of this hearing today is to gather information. You've had time to gather more information, provide to us today, so we can make an informed decision and allow the public to weigh in on this issue. So if there are questions from commissioners, please?
No?
Nope.
Looking at the numbers, it appears to me that roughly 13 to 1,400 units would be available. And that would put it at maximum capacity roughly 100%, give or take.
When you say units, are you talking EDUs?
EDUs.
EDUs right now, I believe the number is 11, 1,195 that are available.
Okay, 1,195?
I believe that's the correct.
So round numbers, 1,200? With some of the construction I've seen over the previous few years, it seems that we've added a fair amount of, let's even say, 300 to 400 of those, not of those, I'm sorry, 300 to 400 in a few years. If we were to average less than 100 a year, which I think would be, I don't think that's possible. I think we have way more than 100 per year in the foreseeable future. We're at that 10-year mark to where we're at full capacity. And we would have to have something else completed, done, operational at that point. And with Mr. Hart's comments and the timelines associated with it, it would take three, five, six years to get that stuff going. So to me, there is still some urgency. Not nearly as what I thought it was a couple of weeks ago. But we're in a one to three-year timeline that those 450 units could be gone in three years, the ones that would put us at the 80% mark. I just wanted to say there is still some urgency. I do appreciate, I do appreciate you guys coming up with alternative ideas than running a pipeline down the edge of Route 4.
Yes, sir.
And to that point, too, you know, even like, you know, and obviously, you can see there's no support to run that pipeline down there. But even when you get down there, you got the largest community in Calver County in CRE, nowhere to go except holding tanks. You know, all the creeks and everything, nowhere to go. So, so in this sewer problem, and you remember it this morning, even before talking to the health department, it's a countywide problem. So, you know, even if we patch a small spot here by running it there, now what are we going to do? And get there, it's like that dam that's got the holes in it, and you're sticking a finger in, sticking a finger in. Eventually, you run out of hands. So I think we're at the urgency part personally. I think that we, we can't wait to wait and see. I mean, to already be that close to here in a window of 10 years, 10 years is like that, you know? And at that point, back to Commissioner Gadway, we need to already have a plan in place to, to handle whatever additional things that this board would allow or future boards would allow. So that's my biggest concern. I, I don't, I think we're already at the 11th hour personally.
To, to tangent a little bit, in reference to the Lesby facility, Lesby Solomon's facility, I believe that that facility was said that it could, with all the modern improvements, all the modern technology, it would be capable of somewhere in the neighborhood of 11,000 EDUs?
And that's a conservative estimate? Yes, sir.
Okay. And just if I'm listening to Dr. Polsky and Champ and everybody else on the environmental health department side, it sounds to me like, and this is more their words than mine, but all septic, actually, this is exactly Dr. Polsky's words, all septic systems will fail. Those are his words exactly. So at what point in time? Who knows? We're seeing some of that in the northern end of the county and some other areas of the county. If we look at everything from Port Republic South, or maybe St. Leonard South, there's 11,000 dwelling units right now, right there, I would imagine, that are on septic, that within 40 to 50 years, we need to have some, some type of tie-in. That's why I'm skeptical about putting anything from the middle or north down that direction.
We've looked at that. That's about 6,600 is what we're looking at from that number.
Gotcha. In addition to what's already currently utilized in the system? Or is that total?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would be added because those are all septic. Yes, sir.
And we already have how many on there, down there?
I believe it's 450 gallons per day that's currently being sent to Solomon's.
Yes, that's the average.
So the EDU balance would be 2,000-ish? That are currently going into Solomon's facility? Ish.
We, we would have to do the math.
Okay.
That, that plan is permanent for 750,000 gallons per day.
I just want to be, I, I just want to make sure that stuff in the south stays and the south stuff in the middle stays and the middle stuff in the north stays in the north. As long as we have the capability of doing that, we don't overload one and then all of a sudden have to have an emergency on the back end.
Mr. President?
Just for clarification, we're talking about conventional septic systems versus our septic system, correct? Wastewater treatment plant. In those numbers, is that what we're talking about here? Is there a separation out? Because I'm trying to understand conventional septic systems have no EDUs, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
That's, that's all.
But if they become a connection, then it becomes as an EDU, depending on how large it is. So yes, but yes.
Commissioners, if I may?
Please, sir.
Mark Wallace County Administrator. Back a few years ago, the Board of County Commissioners directed this same staff to do a countywide investigation of where we were and where we needed to go. This is a byproduct of that direction. When we talk about the potential use of EDUs in the future, Chesapeake Ranch Estates, for example, we can go to St. Leonard, for example. We can go to White Sands. We can go anywhere along the way. They've taken into account the potential addition of those EDUs here, but that doesn't mean that that's the option that we want. We would rather find a place for Prince Frederick here. We would rather find a place for White Sands and St. Leonard, maybe somewhere else. But that's a whole new plant. This was just an option to use what exists. However, we do realize that based on what the Department of Health said earlier this morning, that this problem's not going away. It's going to exponentially become a problem in the future. Hence, the transparency of this issue that we're talking about today. So that's why we have Amy here. She's a geologist that's, that's educating us on the soils as we need to investigate them. So what we're looking for is guidance, really, as, as they continue to plan. Yes, 10 years from now, seems like a, a, a long distance off. It's not that far away in treatment facility language. So we're aware of it. And I think staff's aware of it. So everything that you're pointing out, Commissioner Gadway, we, we're concerned about it, too. We're also concerned about putting it where it needs to go. So with your guidance, with help from Amy's staff, and internally, we're going to find those locations for you. That's what this, in this discussion is about.
So you mentioned ag, you know, working on ag preservation. There is a lot of cropland that's not very far west from the current facility. And I have visited the facility on the eastern shore. And, you know, the limit for that is the soil can only take so much. And there are certain times of the year when they can't. But it may be a cost-effective outlet that we should consider. That's not an everyday solution, but could provide some opportunity during certain times of the year that might be more cost-effective. And in your calculations, you're only looking at Prince Frederick town boundaries as they exist today, correct?
What's the calculation?
EDUs and capacity at the plant is only for the Prince Frederick Town Center as it exists today.
Where, yes, where the current collection system is. The ED capacity of the plant is based on the discharge permitting amount.
And I know Administrator Willis gets excited. But we do have a proposal for Phase Two of Prince Frederick where we're going to expand that area. But you've done no calculation for what that Eda capacity might be, whatever it could be.
We, we have been working with Planning, Zoning, and their consultant to look at what those numbers may be.
But that is not in your calc, is that in your calculation today?
It, it.
Those 1,100 EDUs.
Right. So it would, it would depend on what the buildup potential is and what the potential growth may be in that area.
Understood.
As it is today.
As it is today.
Yeah.
Correct. Which means there's no calculation for that Eda, if it ends up being additional capacity. It's not factored in today.
Right.
Correct.
I understand you're correct.
Yes.
And, and in his, I'm, I'm trying to help you, James. Three miles.
I'm not trying to beat up on you.
No, 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 no. But in, you're talking about that three mile per the presentation, correct? Radii is, is your, what you've calculated?
For disposal.
Yeah, that, that three miles is where we looked at disposal options, the parcels for disposal. The, the town center, the servicing area of Prince Frederick is a, a different area that we're looking at.
And, yes, I understand, Mr. President.
So would it be fair to say, though, that as we stand today, we don't have a solution today, correct?
We're looking for one.
Right. But today, we don't have one.
No, not, not right now. We have, we have.
And this is the process, right. I'm not, no, I'm not attacking you guys, but this is the process to get there. So today, we don't have the answer. My fear is, the more that you put on the system without an answer, the more questions that we don't know. What does an expansion of Prince Frederick does? Could reset your numbers completely? Could facilitate it, I would assume? Could facilitate it to maybe we don't have even 10 years? So what do we do at this point going forward? Because obviously, the responsibility is ours not to overload this system and not to put the taxpayers in a situation where there's going to be an extremely expensive situation to bail itself out of it. And for what reason? You know, why, why would we race to this conclusion without all the information, without proper traffic facilities, EMS, all this? Why would we race to get there? And that's where I spoke the other day, where I think we need to put the brakes on and say, okay, where are we? What can we handle? What can we afford? I mean, we're having a budget discussion later today with the school system, where they're going to have a request for things they need. You know, we, we added more officers. And once you add more officers, it's more, it's more state's attorney. I mean, we, we all know the dominoes that start to fall once you, why are we racing to get there?
Sir, I don't believe we're racing. I believe we're going through a deliberate process to figure out.
No, I mean, why, why is, why with the things that we have in place, do we not have steps in place to keep us from getting there faster than we need to get there?
I believe the adequate public facilities regulations that we are currently working on will help mitigate what you're asking.
And I hope so, because the ones we had in the past were really kind of antiquated. I don't think anybody anticipated in 83 and things of that nature that we would be where we are today. I mean, and I'm not going to get on a road tangent, but, I mean, we see 231, we see Route 4, we see the, the arteries, all of them have issues. So I know you're looking for direction out of this board.
Mr. President, so you know, there are eight folks who have signed up and nine online.
Sure, let's, let's go.
So are there any other questions from the board?
I'll wait.
Seeing none? Mr. Attorney, open a door.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go to those who've signed up to speak in the room first. Those on Zoom, you can press star nine. If you phoned in or used the computer program to raise your hand, we'll get to you after the folks in the room have spoken. The board has opened the floor for public comment for this hearing. If you've signed up to speak, you will be asked to identify yourself. You will be given two minutes if you are speaking as an individual, or five minutes if you are the designated representative of a group. First person who signed up is Susan DeZurich. Okay, Mr. Bowen.
Good morning. I'm Greg Bowen. I'm speaking as an individual. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Have a better history here. My sense is that I'm appearing before a different board than was established almost four years ago. A board that is more willing to hear about long-term issues and concerns, more interested in land preservation, for which I'm very interested. And I'm also very encouraged by the comments that I'm hearing today. An expansion of Prince Frederick is necessitating all this. And we've seen now already some conversations coming about, how can we handle the, the facility needs of the 10,000 new units that the Planning Commission is calling for based on the work of its consultant? And it seems like we've got the cart before the court, the horse here. Because do we, will, do we really have the capacity on the roads or in the water and sewer to address these things that are happening? So without knowing about these capacities, we think, or I think, that there should be no expansion to Prince Frederick until these issues are addressed. And certainly, no pipeline, pipeline to Solomon's. All of this is speculation. I'm encouraged, too, by what I've heard today. I like to see the, the geologists and the scientists. I'm also very proud that Calver County does have land application systems for its sewer treatment plants. Because we're doing a much better job for the river and the bay in terms of addressing sewer than the rest of the, the counties and the state are. So we're in a good place. I think the commissioners are addressing the right questions. But bottom line is, I think we should not be moving forward with an expansion to Prince Frederick, and certainly, no notion of a discussion of pipes down to Solomon's until we have all of these things together. Let's slow things down. Let's do it right. Right now, no expansion of Prince Frederick, no pipelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Estes.
I'm Bob Estes. I'm a resident of Prince Frederick, but I'm speaking for friends of Hunting Creek today. And I was hoping to be a little last, maybe clean up better. But I have a few things to say that, one thing that's bothered me routinely is the loophole, I call it a loophole, in adequate public facilities, that obligates us to provide schools, to provide sewer. If we allow them to build, then... If we allow them to build, then in five years, six years, seven years, we have to provide the facilities whether we can or not. Roads, where are you going to put them? We're obligated. Sewer, where are you going to put it? We don't know. If we allow uncontrolled expansion, then we're going to have uncontrolled expenses in the future. If I'm wrong, I'd be happy to have somebody school me, but I don't see it. It seems simple, and I like to keep it simple. Now, we saw some growth, nice linear growth numbers presented by DPW. We don't know that we're only going to be a half a percent, 1%, 2%. The counties around us far exceed those. They're going 2% to 4%. What do we have in place to prevent that from happening? Do we? I don't think so. And relying on the crutch of adequate public facilities kicks the can down, and we're still going to have to spend money to take care of those things we've obligated ourselves to. It's not a simple thing. I feel, you know, I'm new here. You've only been seeing me for a year, maybe it seems like longer. But it seems to me, in observing the budget negotiations and some of the squeezes on many of our resources... And I don't know about you, but one of the things I taught, tried to teach my son is, if you ain't got the money, then you ain't buying it. And I think that's what we have here. It's not just money, it's resources, it's land, it's water, it's way of life. What's that worth? That's a resource. And I think we're killing it if we're not careful. And some of you who have been here a long time know that we've killed a lot of what we already have, and we're limping along to still be Calvert. One other thing, I was an engineer for 35 years, and I did many, many, many trade studies. And in those trade studies, we released interim reports as we narrowed in on things. It's my understanding there is no interim report. I heard some great numbers. You cannot digest these fantastic numbers that we've heard, and I appreciate them. And I know the science based on what they said. It's there and available. You can't sit up there and digest that. Where are the reports? Do they exist? We tried to get some. Some of my colleagues were told they don't exist. You need to have that hard stuff before you can make any decision. I completely support the spirit of what Mike Hart and what you all discussed last year regarding a moratorium. I think you need time to understand these complex issues, and you need time to make sure you don't push this county over a tipping point. Because there's no going back. Just like with schools, you add numbers, and you've got to stay there. You add obligations, you've got to fulfill them. And I don't know, can we? I... It just doesn't seem like it. You all squeezed every penny out of that budget you can and are going to continue to do that, you're still not there, I don't think. I mean, it's not going to get any easier when you add people to that budget. You can't lean on the nuclear facility. You can't lean on the gas facility. That pie keeps shrinking with each person you add. So consider this carefully. We're watching, and we are encouraged by what we're hearing, but be very, very careful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dan Kelch.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Dan Kelch. I'm a licensed engineer with COA here locally.
Dan, could you please bring that down? Please, sir, I'm sorry.
That's okay. When I started engineering, I was six foot tall. Prince Frederick Town Center was designed to be a intent... The most intense use in the county, a mix of residential and focused commercial. Recent discussions about the comp plan and the various zoning ordinances have resulted in public discussions about, from what I understood, density and housing-type issues. And the end result being a discussion of moratorium for the Prince Frederick area, which is why I'm here today. I am opposed to a moratorium for several reasons. One, it dramatically impacts small business owners more than the rest of the community. Recently, small businesses, weathered a COVID epidemic, mandated practices that may or may not have had scientific background, ultimately led to supply chain issues, which affected not just getting materials for the various businesses, but also for construction of new businesses. And most recently, huge price escalations, all that fall on the back of the small business owners, which is predominantly who I serve as my clients and as most of them as my friends. Stopping small business development for 12 months, somewhat apparently arbitrarily, doesn't seem like that serves them best. I've always known the Water and Sewer Staff Department of Public Works has been pretty conscientious of how they run their plants. I've learned more recently how well they study behind the background and the data and the science about how we get to these various numbers, the 80% threshold and whatnot. I've been actually impressed that they've started their planning well ahead of any necessity to do it from a county standpoint or a state standpoint. And the curve, as I've looked at it today, seems like it's less dramatic than previously we discussed. So in conclusion, I would just say that small businesses thrive on certainty in planning and processes. The county's been changing those, and they've been improving, but it's still... It's no picnic. Even opening... Reopening a store that's closed can take a year or more.
Thank you, sir.
With no additions.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Rodney Gertz.
Rodney Gertz, Claudia Bell Holmes. The... In the discussion of the moratorium, just in... I applaud everybody in the room for the work that they're doing, trying to plan, to properly plan, because that's obviously a very important part of keeping a community, as Bob said, a community, a sense of life, a good sense of life. It's all applauded. The numbers we've heard and the things we've looked at, and I still think we're strongly premature in a reaction of a moratorium. Not of a reaction of this meeting or a reaction of the work that's being done by everybody to make sure that we don't find ourselves on a jam, but definitely in a moratorium is, I think, as Greg spoke first, Greg was the originator of the Town Center concept. He was... That was his vision, with TDRs being involved and them being used in Town Centers and creating this Town Center flourishing while we save the farms. And that's what we've essentially tried to do. Town Centers have never flourished, have flourished, and now they've got a little bit of movement there, and it's creating concern. But it was part of the vision. Everybody's worked in that vision. I have no problem if the vision changes in the future. As I've said before, it's the board's privilege to do that for the work and effort you guys put in. At the same time, I just ask that everything would be respected as far as any type of projects that are in the process. By the time we get to the beginning stage of the process as a developer, you're already two years in by the time we go to Planning and Zoning, by the time we go to DPW. But one of the first questions we do ask is, is there sewer capacity? And we look at it, and we look at those... Or we look at whatever they're going to tell us and project out six or eight years and say, do we have... Can we get there? And we easily say, assess that was assessed as yes in Prince Frederick, you know, just a few years ago. And that's how your project, that's how you kind of begin along. So I just ask that the board, if anything is, you know, implicated or anything is basically put in place, that it would basically just respect grandfathering back to the beginning TG submission at a very early stage. I think it's horrible for the small businesses in the sense that they will be... Things that you want in Town Center, small business that require four taps might be held away. So just think long and hard. Great discussion, but please, you know, think of it from all sides of the equation. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan DeZuric.
My name is Susan DeZuric, and I'm speaking on behalf of Calvert Citizens United. Good morning, Commissioners. I have given you a packet of supporting documentation for my comments. The first is a letter dictated and signed by the late Senator Bernie Fowler for CCU in May of 2020. It was sent to multiple environmental groups he had worked with closely through the years. Highlights include how much he loved growing up in Calvert County, returning from World War II to a life of public service to citizens, and standing arm-in-arm with them to raise awareness of the need to preserve Calvert from the ever-looming threat of overdevelopment. Quote, "Never in all my years have I seen the threat be more alarming than what citizens are facing in this very moment." He states, "The water quality of the bay and its tributaries need to be returned to the 1940, 50s quality, and this being one of my last goals for Calvert County cannot be accomplished without the substantial implementation of limiting growth." He talks about the TDR program, but sadly sounds... But sadly, sound practices as this may not be enough moving forward if the developers have their way. He states, "It's impossible to adequately express in words how angry and frustrated I am with the Calvert County's newly adopted comprehensive plan, that by periodically tweaking the Pleasant Peninsula Plan, the citizens wrote while he was in office, 'We have enjoyed the benefits and how it has guided us for years.'" Quote, "Those who are currently in opposition to the will of the majority of the people by developing and voting for a whole new comprehensive plan can only be doing it for one reason. I begrudge them not their intended wealth, but the totality and cost of the new plan will be a burden to future citizens for generations to come. This undoubtedly will occur through the financial impact to citizens and the devastation of our county's natural resources, including the rivers and the bay. This cost is far too greatly great to fully comprehend." He quotes Martin Luther King, "The time is always right to do what is right," and states that without intervention, once the plan is executed, we will witness damage in all aspects of our life. He explains why he is lending his support to the citizens in Calvert Citizens United and goes on to talk about, quote, "The pervasiveness of the developers' influence on the county's administration, which was epitomized when the former president of the developers' group, known as the Small Interest Group, declared during a comprehensive plan public hearing that four years earlier, they had formed a coalition with the county government." He then goes on to finish his letter. "Commissioners, it is important to know the players on your team." First, in these documents, is an email provided by SPIG listing all the names and the email addresses of their members. A few on that list were misled by the word "small" and had nothing to do with the coalition. The next document is an attendee list from the minutes of the actual meetings of the coalition. Attending the meeting were 12 county officials and staff and 11 SPIG members. The focus of this particular meeting was the county's tier map. I'd like to read an excerpt from the minutes. You will have a better understanding of the pervasiveness of the developers' influence that Bernie spoke about. There is discussion about how the county is going to contact landowners whose property is eligible to be placed into designation, allowing it to be developed, and whether the SPIG members can assist with getting the word out. Now, listen carefully. A realtor member of SPIG, quote, "Asked if it would be possible for the SPIG to obtain a list of the affected property owners so members can assist with contacting them. After discussion with Terri Shannon's approval, staff stated she can provide the list. The willingness of two former BOC members and its administration to aid the developers is astounding. Had that list been provided, it would have allowed the developers to contact owners of property in play on behalf of the county. They could have then stayed and started negotiations for the possible purchase of the property, setting the market price that could have led to executing letters of intent." It was afterward that the county realized that they couldn't allow SPIG members to contact landowners on the county's behalf, that SPIG's plan to do so was foiled. Commissioners, clearly, the comp plan and the expansions of all the town centers and all that entails was done in such a manner that the citizens have no way of knowing impact of such growth, both financially or environmentally, was done for the purpose of personally enriching developers and other SPIG members, leaving taxpayers to deal with the consequences. In court, your attorney, John Mattingly, on two occasions told judges on any given Tuesday, "You can change the comprehensive plan. Well, Commissioners, this is the Tuesday, and this is the time to reverse the decisions to expand the town centers and all that entails. Then, do the studies needed accurately and with thoughtful consideration of the impact on the generations to come, plan Calvert's future."
Thank you.
As the finest statesman ever served.
Mike Lally is the next speaker.
County quoted, "The time is always right to do what is right."
Mike Lally.
You have to get closer to the mic, sir, and introduce yourself again, please.
Mike Lally, Bill Wright on developers. Just on the fact of the moratorium, much like Rodney, I'd like you to take into consideration where some of these projects are. Much like Mary Beth said, it takes years and years and years to get some of these approved. I have, one, it's two months out from being recorded and started up. So if a media moratorium goes in, what's going to happen is going to put people like me out of work as well as my coworkers. So just please take into consideration when you're looking at these things, if you take a look of how long it takes to get things done on this and how much that we have already put into it and where we are in that stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Fisher.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Susan Fisher, and I live in Solomons. I come here today representing myself. I am not an important person. I'm not anyone that anyone knows, just a resident of Solomons. I probably live closer to the water treatment plant in Solomons than anybody. I have lived there since my kids were in diapers. My son is now a Lieutenant Commander in the United States Navy as a Navy SEAL. My daughter's a teacher in the state of Arizona. So it's been a while since they were in diapers. So I feel that I can speak on this subject with some knowledge because I have lived there for quite some time. There was recently an article in The County Times written by Dick Myers, which stated there had been two spills over at the water treatment site. I live 100 yards from this facility. No one ever came to my house. No one ever called me. No one ever emailed me. I never received anything in the mail. The only thing I saw was a parade of vehicles hauling sewage out of there for an extended period of time. That, to me, is upsetting, and I would appreciate at some point in the future, if there is an incident where there's a toxic spill, that I be informed. I think that's fair. I would like to say, I don't know if there's anybody else here from Solomons. If this meeting was held at night, you probably would have a little bit more of a turnout for people from Solomons. Solomons is my home. I would not want to see a pipeline bringing sewage from other areas to our area, especially given the fact that there have been spills down at that site. I would just like to end by saying that I love my home, I love my county, and I love my state. Commissioner Weems, you will be missed, and I thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra Gallens.
I'm Myra Gallens, and I'm not here speaking for Calvert Citizens United because Sue did. However, I guess I should say I am running for office so that that's proper. Two weeks ago, we were in the Court of Special Appeals. Mr. McConkey, Kelly McConkey's attorney, was there, and the attorney got a dressing down from the judges. We were all in attendance, sat there right behind him. And the problem that we have is, the first time the identity of the plan and a discussion of the plan was addressed. And here's what it is. Mr. Preller said, and I quote, "Mr. Preller said, 'Your honors, you have to understand something. This problem is bigger than just the property and the Ethics Commission ruling. There is an adjacent case in COA, Court of Appeals, that states that they believe that the county was... Did not provide adequate information to the citizens and that the comprehensive plan was illegally approved. It's the first time a judge has asked an attorney about this and what the repercussions are." So what I think needs to be done... So what I think needs to be done, and I've said this over and over, and I've written it in articles, is that we need to stop right now and remand the comprehensive plan and anything that's attached to it. The fruit of the poisonous tree is what it's known as in the lawsuit, and that's the master plans. You need to remand the plan back to the citizens and the new Board of County Commissioners so they can determine, what is the cost benefit analysis? What is the actual road that the transportation has to deal with? And we need the citizens' involvement, not just SPIG and those 11 members that sat there. I'm just going to say this. These builders build nice subdivisions. They build good homes. It does not give them the right to slice and dice up this county when it's the smallest county in Maryland and the sixth smallest county in the United States.
Mark Frisco on Zoom?
Mark Frisco here with the Calvert County Chamber of Commerce, currently the board chair, also the chairman of our Business Advisory Committee for the last seven years. So I first want to commend County Administrator Mark Willis in his previous capacity as Director of Planning and Zoning for the wise planning and getting ahead of this potential issue. It's obvious that Public Works has been working on this since 2017 and has exhausted a lot of effort, and it seems like there are multiple different avenues of which that we can take. So I just want to echo the words of our members that, you know, business in Calvert County, in the words of Dan Kelch, has been no picnic. There's been a lot of efforts over a long period of time to make Calvert County more business friendly. And as part of that, you know, there was a mention of a meeting that used to occur, which was run by the Calvert County Chamber of Commerce with county department heads, and in which case in that meeting, there was a question posed by a local Realtor individual, which I believe might have been myself, about a list of landowners inside of the discussion about the tier mapping system. That question about the list was to notify 40 landowners that their rights of development was going to be stripped from them if and when that county tier map was placed and imposed. And I don't want to, I want to clear the air on that. Like, that was the reason, to notify farmers and landowners that their rights of development was going to be removed. So back to the topic at hand. I agree with Rodney Gertz that if anything, you know, you need to honor plans that are currently in process. I also agree with Mr. Lally. You know, this is going to hurt individuals that are small business owners, myself included, who owns a piece of property inside of the town center currently. That piece of property would only use a handful of EDUs and would create jobs inside of our community. I think that this conversation is way in advance of what it needs to be. I think that we're at 68% capacity. The state requires us to take efforts at 80%. We started taking efforts five years ago in planning, well advanced this, again, under the leadership of Mary Beth Cook and Mark Willis and the Department of Public Works. So I believe that now is not the time for any kind of moratorium. I believe that as of this moment, we should be monitoring the EDUs that are issued. It's very simple for the county commissioners to give direction to planning and zoning, to monitor the EDUs, keep them informed, and in the event that we're approaching a threshold that we should not go beyond, at that point in time, a discussion could be had about a moratorium or limiting EDUs, the issuance of EDUs. Quite frankly, the fact that we're having this conversation today, I think, is a waste of most of everyone's time, because it's well in advance of what it should be. And if anything, Department of Public Works should be back at their office, continuing to work on these efforts that need to be put in place in the next 10 years, not as of today. So that is my two cents. The Calvert County Chamber of Commerce stands with the business community and believes that the business community should have the right to develop their properties inside of Prince Frederick ongoing. And listen, that means that we support the local businesses here. We don't want expansive, crazy growth. Nobody wants that. If anything, I think Calvert needs to set a growth rate that is sustainable, and we continue along that course, because zero growth is not the answer either. I have a saying in life, you're either going backwards or you're going forwards, and you're never sitting still. So if we stop growth entirely in Calvert County, we will be going backwards, and that will also cost the citizens of this county dearly. So with that, I pass.
Thank you. Anthony Olickson?
Good afternoon, everybody. I guess the lesson learned here is try to sign up before Mark talks, because he kind of hit a lot of the points that I think I also wanted, just to reiterate to everybody here. Yeah, I think the Department of Public Works, the Department of Planning and Zoning are doing exactly what it is that they, they should be doing at this point. Commissioner Hart asked the question, is, you know, what do we do at this point in moving forward? And I think those guidelines are pretty clear, is, you know, once you hit, hit the 80% threshold, that is when MDE requires you to begin this planning, that in this case, the Department of Public Works has started at least five years ahead of time, from, from what I can tell. You know, and I think they're doing the right things. I mean, they're trying to figure out solutions to expand the plants within the town center, which is really what is the goal of the comprehensive plan and the water and sewer comprehensive plan. You know, it's, you know, they want to see that, you know, the development happen in the town centers. And I think by prematurely implementing a moratorium, you're going to direct that, that development to scatter development throughout the more rural areas of Calvert County. So I think, I don't think it's time. I think it's, it's actually kind of unprecedented to try to implement a moratorium at this point, when there's essentially 30% capacity that's left in the system. The development of the plans that DPW, Department of Public Works, is going through, as well as the development of a adequate public facilities ordinance that would focus on water and sewer, I think is great. I think it's the right way forward. You know, proper planning is critical, right? And especially when you're looking at adequate public facilities. So putting something in place to monitor, record, and control those sewer allocations, that is absolutely the right, the right way forward. I just don't, you know, agree with kind of with what, you know, Mark Frisco was saying there, is that I just think it's, you know, going to a moratorium at this point is ahead of the game in his kind of cart before the horse of what we should be doing. There's other options out there that we talked, you know, that were talked about, about that. There is actually another 95,000 gallon per day capacity at one of the plants that could be tapped into.
Thank you, sir.
With the next few years.
Next speaker is Nelson Orocho.
Hopefully, everyone can hear me. My name is Nelson Orocho. I'm with Bay Engineering. Also a resident, been Calvert County for 26 years. And so, much of what has been said, I'll quickly echo. I think that the moratorium at this point would be premature. I think staff has done a good job, both planning, staff and the Public Works in providing information and, and moving forward with trying to resolve issues that happen everywhere. And so this is not isolated. This has happened in other jurisdictions that worked in, and so I commend staff again for being upfront and forward-thinking and trying to move this along so there's a resolution. As far as a moratorium's concerned, for people like Bill Wright Homes, and Mike Lally said it affects him, and it, we work closely with them. I've been working with them for, since I've been here in Calvert County 26 years. And, you know, the, the owner of the company passed away. His wife is now running the company, and one of the jobs that could be affected by this moratorium would literally shut her inventory, let's call it, or her workload down to where it could close her business. And they've been in business in Calvert County for, I think, close to 40 years. This is, I mean, this is not just, you know, these are people. These are residents that work and live in Calvert County. And, and it's, it's impactful, and they're at the door. When Mike Lally said he has a project, I mean, literally, a month, a month away, and we're, we're beyond the threshold. And, and beyond concept, this is not sites that have just early started. You know, we've been, they've spent a lot of money to get to this point. So, again, I would just agree with the comments of Tony and, and Dan, Mark, that, you know, this, this is something that should be considered very, not lightly with the effect of trying to put a moratorium. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
So I want to thank everybody for coming out today and speaking. Any more questions in staff? Yes, sir?
Questions or comments?
Oh, whatever.
Can we take a look at Slide 9 again, please? First and foremost, I really want to appreciate and say thank you to everybody's comments. I appreciate them greatly. I'm, to quote Mr. Freeland at one of the Planning Commission meetings, "Becoming a commissioner, I never realized I would have to learn so much about sewage." So I've heard the job is full of it, and now I believe it. With that, with the humor aside, I'm looking at this between basically four to six years, I'm sorry, four to eight years will be at our capacities. If it takes three to six years to build and one to two years to find and design, we are at that point now. I had the opportunity to go to the Rural Lands Preservation Meetings last week, and I heard so many people there talking about kicking crabs. I actually, they have, they had to explain what kicking crabs was, and that those days in this county are gone. A lot of the things that were here in this county are gone, and that'll never come back. I just heard a couple days ago that this is going to be the last trophy rockfish season for many of ours' lifetime. There will never be another Chesapeake Bay trophy rockfish season after this year. As we are growing, that's what I'm being told. I'm not DNR. But as we continue to grow, it kind of reminds me of the frog in the pot scenario. We are all here where we are because we, we've all been ignoring just a little bit of the problem over a period of time. Two weeks ago, and the reason why we're here today, I don't believe is a waste of time, because less, right at two weeks ago today, the only proposed solution to any of this was to put a pipeline down Route 4. So I don't think it's a waste of time. I think it's been an incredibly great two weeks because it's brought a lot of this other stuff to light. Two weeks ago, we heard nothing about possible expansions in Prince Frederick. We were told that couldn't happen. So thank you to everybody for putting the information out there. I think we're closer to having to take action on this than we thought, but I can breathe a sigh of relief knowing that in six years, we're not going to have a pipeline pushing down Route 4, at least at this point in time. Thank you.
So gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Generally, we will keep the record open for a period of time and then make a decision. But it's the pleasure of the board. And I, just to follow up with that, that's because information was provided today that some of us hadn't heard, and certainly the public hadn't heard, and it's to give people an opportunity to respond based on what they hear today. But again, it's your discretion how we move forward, so we're open for direction.
Mr. President, I, I move that the board directs staff to continue the evaluation of available options and proceed with the exploration and presentation of appropriate adequate public facility regulations.
Is there a timeline, Commissioner Weems?
No.
No.
What is the, if we were to put water sewer into the appropriate adequate public facilities regulations?
Well, I'm trying to figure out where he's going. You know, we do need a second to discuss the motion.
Second.
So we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Thank you, Commissioner.
So, and, and with, with all respect to your query, Commissioner Hans, Mr. President, basically stated it would be about 12 months. Is that Mary Beth, correct-ish? I'm going to throw out a, a other possible pathway with the zoning ordinance. Is that another possible pathway implementation?
So I think taking it out of the zoning ordinance would be quicker to put it in the county code. Certainly, as, as quick as we can get it written, we'll bring it before you and then get it through the adoption process. So my hope would be by the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Beth.
So can I have the motion again, Commissioner Weems? I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
You want me to read it verbatim?
Please.
I move that the board directs staff to continue the evaluation of available options and proceed with the exploration and presentation of appropriate adequate public facility regulations.
So for clarity, though, business just presumes as normal until those findings are there, and that could be a year or so. Is that the motion?
Well, that is logistically what she has stated, but the motion is what the motion is.
So for me, I, I can't support an open-ended, no disrespect to anyone, I can't support an open-ended motion. I think we're at the crossroads here where, where not only does direction have to be given, but a timeline has to be there, and I don't want to be after the fact. Once, once we're past the point of no return, then we have a solution, so no disrespect, but I won't go split that.
So one thing I, I, I want to point out, you know, there's parallel, there's, where, I'll just say it, and I'm not advocating it, because the EDU price point, can that be adjusted by this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I'm going to say, and I'm not advocating, condoning that measure.
So.
Or condemning it.
Commissioner's heart concern is a timeline for actions.
And I'm with him on that.
So if we got some kind of an update from staff, whatever makes you comfortable, could be monthly, whatever, and if we had Director Cook keep us in the loop of when proposals come in our office, until we can get the ordinance in place that would take care of So some like that.
My concern is, though, and we've seen this in the past, the onslaught comes, and it says, hey, I beat the deadline, I got it in the door. And one of the speakers spoke and was, was spot on. Once it happens, we are obligated, the roads, the schools, the EMT services, all the above, we're obligated to pay for all that. So I, I, I don't have a problem with grandfathering things that are down the pike, that are there, figured into your numbers. I have no issues with things like that, but my, my issue is all of a sudden, and I don't have a number to throw out there, but a, a project pops up that is going to absorb so much of what's available and facilitate that timeline that we can't handle it. That, that's my, that's my biggest concern.
So many of the things here, let me rephrase it. Some of the things here seem to be reactionary and not proactive, and I don't see anything, and I could be wrong, and you guys have been proactive in looking into this and looking down the road, but if we've got 1,100 possible EDUs in Prince Frederick area that can be utilized before we're at 100% capacity, is there a way that we can sit there and say, the ones that are already out there, maximize 600, pick and maximize 600, pick a number. And once we get to that number of 600, it's a hard pause. And that's preset until we have a plan in place of what's going to happen and the timeline of fixing the problem and addressing the problem. Because if we've only got 1,100 possible, if we use all 600 of them in two years, if we use 600 of the 1,100 in two years, that's going to be a lot quicker on that graph. That, that's a question, I don't know if that's something possible or not. I don't know.
But if I recall, in your plan, there are some things that you can do. Don't you have the possibility of a rib on our property today?
That, that's one option that we're allowed to explore, yes.
Yes.
But we're capable of further, furthering the.
Right.
The exploration of that technology there, yes.
Right. So that's, that's an option that allows some expansion that you can, you can do probably quickly.
But, but directing towards what Commissioner Gadway was saying, that's essentially what the 80% threshold is designed to do, is to put us in a planning cycle to actually figure it out.
Understood. But my reason in bringing that up is because there's been so much work already established in trying to accommodate, or not accommodate, trying to find the available land. And that's where we're running into some of the roadblocks. And so I'm glad you guys started it early because it's given us a heads up and a head start on that. But if we don't, if we still don't have the adequate grounds and the adequate soils, let's say a short 36 months from now, we're going to be sitting here in a much tighter timeframe because 36 months from now, we're going to be at or above that 80% possible.
Yes, absolutely. I totally agree with what you're saying.
Until, I just didn't know if there could be a hard stop or a hard pause pre-programmed in, which would eliminate the grandfathering and everything else.
Well, remember too, you know, this is just sewer we're talking about. This isn't roads, traffic, everything else. I mean, we're addressing this in particular issue. Even if you address this issue, have you addressed the other issues? And that's where my main concern was. It's a whole community. Somebody also mentioned way of life. What's the value of way of life?
Mr. County Attorney, would you like to say something?
Please. Thank you, John Norris County Attorney. One of the things the suggested motion we provided Commissioner Williams does not do is close the record on this public hearing. Perhaps the board might want to leave the record open until November 1 to get us, let the public comment, and then we can come back to the board November 15, which is close to Director Cook's this calendar year, um, timeline for adopting adequate public facilities.
The moratorium only gets you 12 months.
At, at best, yes.
So at the end of the day, they've still got to have a plan in place. If you did a moratorium today, they still got to have a plan in 12 months.
Sorry, I'd like to put out one thing. Could you go back to slide eight, please? Bottom line there, crossing the 38, the 80% threshold is actually voluntary curtailment of building permit approvals is something that could be in place that I pointed out earlier as far as the briefing. So you cross the 80% threshold, whatever that may be, six years, eight years, 12 years, then you could put the moratorium in at that point. And as if we're keeping you apprised on a routine basis, then you're going to know when we're approaching that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend my motion.
Yes, sir.
And the motion is, I move that the board direct staff to continue the evaluation of available options and proceed with the exploration and presentation of appropriate adequate public facilities regulations and, and provide a bi-monthly report on progress. And that's the amended. What about leaving the record open? Is that? Oh, uh, I apologize. That was a good point, sir. I'd like to close the record. Okay. Second.
That's closing the record now.
Closing the record.
But that still doesn't put any limitations. It still allows businesses normal. So.
And then it gives a bi-monthly.
It puts a timeline here for us to get a study together. Are you, what about new projects?
Well, Mike, they've been studying it since 2017 or 2018.
I agree. But I'm talking a total picture of everything. That's just the one facet. So, I mean, is this, is this going to take in, I mean, you, you pass the new adequate facilities ordinance and then a project that was already approved in the timeline doesn't meet that, what are you going to do with that project? Because you're going to say, well, hey, I got it in, in that time. Your new, your new ordinance says that, you know, I fall short of meeting that. Now what?
So today, this public hearing is only in regards to water and sewer. And I believe I heard that they won't approve projects if there are not available EDUs.
Yes, sir.
So they're not going to approve a project that's going to push us over the limit.
Well, you made it clear too, when you reach the 80%, then you don't approve any more permits, correct?
No, it's, it's an option. It's an option's available to us.
But that's when you set the moratorium.
Right.
If you've reached the 80%, now you have a problem. So you set a moratorium then.
If we walk in here four or five years from now, six years from now, and say, hey, we're at 78%, it might be time to be at that decision point to make a choice on whether or not we're going to curtail permits.
Just based on what we have on slide, unnumbered here, three, four, five. Just based on what we have on five, that's 647. If everything were to go through, and I understand that these things can take years to get to that point, but in, just based on that, in theory, three years, we're already 85, maybe 90%?
But there's, sir, there's no guarantee that's going to happen in three years.
There's no guarantee it's not either.
How, how long did it take to go from the 67% to 68%? How many years?
I, I would have to go back and look at that data, sir. I mean, when you say 67 to 68.
What was the data in 2017?
2017, sir, I don't know if I. Go to the next slide, please.
Slide nine, I believe.
Yeah, nine. Correct. So if you follow the green line up, sir, like I stated before, 2017, we bumped up. 2018, it bumped up in 2018, then it bumped down in 2019. So we didn't really, it was offset. And like I said, we were averaging in the neighborhood of 9,263 gallons per year over that five-year span when we were looking at that. And I said, to keep the math simple, it's just, I'll put up to 10, is what I did. And that's why I got that trend.
So.
And if you wanted to equate that, I believe that's 50 EDUs a year in, in execution.
So you're also assuming that people are using certain amount of water and when it goes down, then they're using less, right? What, what causes it to go down and dip?
The decrease in flow.
Right. Gotcha. So at the same time it's going up, it can come down?
Yes, sir. It depends on what's going on. You might have businesses that shutter. I don't know. And they, they, you turn one from a restaurant and turns into a store where it sells clothes.
Exactly.
Okay? And there's going to be less water consumption and less EDU usage there.
And also the amount of EDUs for what you're assuming to happen, or you don't have any way of knowing what exact stores are going in. You're just assuming to come up with those numbers, correct?
It goes through a process, through the permitting process, or when we, when we figure that out. So it'll be assigned when they break, and what we do is when they come up with a public works agreement, that's when those EDUs are actually assigned to those permits.
Gotcha.
But like, like a, a store doesn't concern me, like restaurant, convenience store, what have you. There, there's so much data to, to get a good ballpark. What concerns me is you pop up 500 units and you start putting that stress on the system. 500 units, 1,000 people, if there's three in there, it's 1,500 people. You start putting that stress on the system. Those are the things that concern me. Replacing an existing thing, there's already a little bit of data there to work with as it is. But that's what, that's the part that concerns me is all of a sudden you wake up, you've got 1,500, 2,000, whatever, more units, plus that amount of people, and you don't have the adequate facilities to maintain it. And then at that point, what do you do?
So Director Cook, um, you know what's already in concept. If you take out what's in concept and look at available land area left in original Prince Frederick, how much opportunity is there?
So the opportunity that's there can always go commercial or residential. So it would be a pure guess at this point. Now, we can determine the amount of acreage that's available.
Right.
But we couldn't never predict what's going to be developed.
I mean, based on what I know, there's not a lot of raw land left.
There really isn't.
In old Prince Frederick.
Right.
So if we get rid of phase two, I've never liked phase two. I voted against phase two. If we get rid of phase two, that limits the potential for any big project to come.
Can that be on the table today?
Absolutely. Everything is on the table. So that was my point. If, except for re, rebuilding, tearing something down and building new, if you look at the raw land that's left in Prince Frederick, there ain't much left.
Not a lot.
Because projects that are already in concept are going to eat up probably half of what's already, what's sitting there now and looks empty to the people driving up and down the road. There are already projects in concept. They're coming. So, you know, when you look at the little bit of land that's left, I just don't think there's enough to eat up a bunch of EDUs in old Prince Frederick. I say old Prince Frederick. That's probably a wrong term.
One of the things that was said last week, which I, or two weeks ago, which I'm assuming is still accurate today, as long as we don't hit those thresholds, this system is not failing. It'll last in perpetuity, correct?
With proper maintenance, yes.
Right. So.
Let's not hit those numbers.
The, the other solution is we don't hit those numbers. If we eliminate the expansion and we, we build responsibly utilizing the 1,000-ish EDUs that we have left or something like that, then if we're able to find and build another treatment facility that'll open up another 2, 3, 4, 500 EDUs, then we can utilize those at that point.
But you know, what's not even being talked about either is, okay, so you find the solution. What's the cost? It's not going to be free. So what, what's that cost? Is it millions?
So for water and sewer, there is no cost to us because that's an enterprise fund.
Goes on, right, goes on, uh.
And they're going to pay whoever does that. Now, the other costs that are not relevant to this hearing today, but the other costs are.
Sure.
More important.
Sure.
I'm just trying to stay focused on water and sewer today.
So I, I'm with you. I, I believe the, the elimination of phase two, phase one is pretty, is, is pretty much probably what's in front of us is what's in front of us. I would say for the most part. Would you say that's fair? We know pretty much for what's available on phase one, what's been proposed and what, and what would be done. It's not a lot left up for development, correct, in phase one?
I mean, we're talking about the 85% that were, I mean, the 647 that are on the table right now.
Right.
And phase one is currently in place or not?
That's what we know of. So phase two.
Is it unknown?
It's unknown.
It's unknown.
And you know you don't have capacity for that.
So right now, today, those proposals are in the comprehensive plan, not the zoning ordinance. The land has not been rezoned.
Correct.
Correct.
So it's merely in the comprehensive plan. There is no phase one or phase two, other than on a plan, in the comprehensive plan.
So, yes, good. Oh, thank you, Mary Beth. Mark, were you going to say something, sir? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mark was county administrator. I would like to point out the fact that we are in the middle of the update of the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. If you go back to August of 2019 during the adoption of the comprehensive plan, which is a vision, it does not put it on the map. That vision allowed for the citizens of this county to come back in public forum and vote themselves again specifically to Prince Frederick, phase one and phase two. So phase one is not in place. Phase two is not in place. So the citizens of this county still have the opportunity to eliminate those before this board and before the planning commission in public session.
Thank you.
And there's not much in phase one. That's just the boundary lines mainly. Yeah. Well, it moves a couple of boundary lines to line up with property lines.
Could I ask clarification on the proposed motion that we have on the table?
Certainly.
It's my understanding that the motion would close public comment and public record. And it's my understanding that it would direct staff to explore and present whether or not water sewer would be put into adequate public facility regulations. Is that an accurate summary?
Yes. With a bi-monthly report on said progress. That's the amended.
And if I can get, as the new guy, I still got a few more months, I can say that.
Sure.
Adequate public facility regulations. If water sewer is put into adequate public facility regulations, what does that, what does that mean? What?
So at the time a plan comes in for subdivision or site plan review, adequate public facilities are analyzed. So we are not able to approve a site plan or subdivision without the facilities being adequate. Now, there is a exception that for schools, for instance, you only have to wait six years. So we would literally put your subdivision on hold for six years. And after those six years, then you can record. That's if the schools are inadequate. So we could, I mean, right now, we got a clean slate. We can write these new adequate public facility ordinance regulations for water and sewer to not have that, you know, that have to wait till the facilities are adequate. I mean, we have.
So we don't know what the, what that would say yet?
Not yet. We're working on it.
Okay.
And we can't, we can't set a deadline for that to happen because there are other players that involved in that process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And they could delay the process, even though we say we could have it done in 12 months.
If we see a delay occurring and we have the water and sewer ready, we already have the schools and roads, which we're ready to take out. We can move forward with it, with whichever portions we need to move forward to get this for water and sewer done.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor. And, um, just for me, based on the information I see today, I just don't feel like today we need to institute a moratorium. I think that staff has identified potential solutions to the issue. I think that they are motivated now. I think there are other things we can address, just like the text amendments hearing that's coming up on Thursday night. I just don't think, for me, today, I'm ready to do that. So I'm going to support Commissioner Williams' motion.
Roll call, vote?
If you're ready. So I will repeat the motion. I move that the board direct staff to continue the evaluation of available options and proceed with the exploration and presentation of appropriate adequate public facility regulations and provide bi-monthly updates and close the record. So Commissioner Gadway.
Thank you for the explanation on everything. I will support the motion.
Yes. Commissioner Wiens?
Yay.
Commissioner McConkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Opposed.
I vote yes. So that's four to one. Takes care of this. Thank you, staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those of you that attended and those on Zoom, thank you. We appreciate it.
Talk too much.
So the next item on the agenda will be a lot more fun. Excuse me. We have a meeting going on. Please. Shh.
Just call her out.
All right. Ms. Ruthie, settle down. That's good.
How do we take a break for?
Well, if y'all would let her out of the office more often.
So the next item on the agenda is an award to Employee Recognition Committee.
I have an amendment to my notes.
Uh-oh.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Wes LaPray, formerly of Technology Services, and I'm here as a retiree representative of the Employee Recognition Committee, here today to introduce a Team Excellence Award. The Team Excellence Award acknowledges employees who excelled in a group setting, displayed cooperation and teamwork in support of a common goal or project which produced exemplary results. Today, the ERC is recognizing the COVID relief. Today, the ERC is recognizing the COVID relief rental assistance team. Please bear with me. This is a success story and it's got a huge number of people, as you can see. And so I'll go through some of this. Perhaps we can get everybody to come forward, give their names.
Katie Britton with Communications and Media Relations.
John Bennett, CMR.
Erin Lowe, CMR.
Terrell Gross, CMR.
Sarah Eamon, CMR.
Jessica Requelman, CMR.
Daryl Baxter, CMR.
Kevin Schmidt, CMR.
Ashley Wilkerson, Community Resources.
Cheers.
Chesa Reed, Community Resources.
Lisa Toleme, Community of Resources.
Jacqueline Culver, Community Resources.
Robin Lynch, Finance and Budget.
Kim Money, Finance and Budget.
Tony Zin, Water and Sewer.
Charlene Jones, Water and Sewer.
Chris Hall, Water and Sewer.
James Ritter with Public Works.
Ruthie Buckler, County Administrator's Office.
Stephen Perea.
Don't hide, Kim. Get out there.
Well, everyone, the COVID-nineteen pandemic resulted in many unique challenges. While the world was adjusting to the new normal of masks, teleworking, office changes, personal health conditions, and social distancing, Calvert County government staff was called on to address the special needs of our community. When we think of, when we think of COVID heroes, we often think of the frontline workers, the first responders, the hospital staff, the flashy lights in emergencies. However, in this case, many of the everyday heroes we have gathered in front of us worked behind the scenes. Throughout the pandemic, staff began working each and every day to keep Calvert County citizens, those who live in rentals, and keep them in their homes while preventing evictions. This award includes many individuals who worked on, worked as a team to implement five different rental assistance programs totaling nearly four and a half million dollars in financial assistance for our Calvert County residents. These efforts were not one-time displays of excellence. This was a marathon with many sprints within the race. We did not hire new staff to handle this massive undertaking. The staff already on hand in the county government performed these additional duties in addition to their normal jobs. This effort truly gave new meaning to the words we all understand from our job class specifications, other duties as assigned. Before COVID, this was not an essential function of government, of Calvert County government. There was nobody trained in waiting to deal with this problem. This work was not anybody's job description. In business terms, there was no existing workflow for this. This team invented one, and they did it. Emergency Rental Assistance Program has proven to be a critical service for renters and landlords to prevent homelessness, evictions, and even utility turnoffs. This program provided rental and utility assistance as well as security deposits. As a result of, Calvert County government residents were supported during the times of increased unemployment and COVID-related cost increases. Community Resources staffers, you see some of them up here. I'm not sure you can tell who they are. But Director Jennifer Moreland, Lorraine Joyner, Jacqueline Culver, developed the initial response and secured state funding and federal funding as well. Staff members quickly learned to review and approve rental assistance requests daily. Lisa Toleme joined the team in December twenty twenty-one and was an important implementation of the second round of rental assistance funding. All payment requests were submitted to Finance and Budget and the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. With support from Director Moreland, this team hit the ground running and led the state in the processing and allocation of available funds. Finance and Budget staff, including Robin Lynch, Loretta Marco, Janice Marcellus Ward, Kim Money, and Mary Layman, insured budgets were properly created and processed more than a thousand wire transfers and check requests. The call center staff included Chesa Reed and Ashley Wilkerson. They answered calls and addressed the unique concerns of the tenants and landlords daily, providing excellent customer service. Every single citizen who inquired about the program was contacted by Chesa and Ashley directly and more than once so that they were assured that the full understanding of what was happening. Chesa, Ashley, and Savannah Manning also completed a monthly data report. Nothing happens without reports for the Maryland Housing and United States Treasury, which included over thirty data points per payment. In August twenty twenty-one, the Treasury changed reporting requirements for the grant. This meant that Chesa, Ashley, Savannah, and Jacqueline had to rework four months of data by hand to ensure accuracy. They did this without complaint. This data was needed for the county to get reimbursed monthly. Ruthie Buckler was instrumental in establishing an automated workflow process. There's that buzzword again. To get anything done right, you have to basically write it up so that you can economize on your time and do it right better and faster as things go along. And she did this using the Zendesk software that allowed applications to be received, processed, and use a central database, providing a single point of access for communication with landlords, tenants, agencies, and county departments. Stephen Perea created an online intake form that integrated with the Zendesk software so call center staff could follow up with each interested citizen with the most accurate and timely information. The automated system gave the staff credibility because the answers were quick and complete. Two other counties have reached out to see if they can duplicate our process. Calvert County has been a trailblazer in coordinating the delivery of the rental assistance funds, made possible by the hard work of the Communications and Media Relations Department. Erin Lowe, Sarah Eamon, Heather Skyrim, Katie Britton, and Chesa Requelman notified all these citizens about the rental assistance program through social media posts, local advertisements, billboards, and a very successful Instagram and YouTube Live streaming broadcasts. Instagram Live was produced by Kevin Schmidt, John Bennett, Daryl Baxter, and Terrell Gross. Before the second Instagram Live broadcast, there were only about three months worth of funding left. This was a good time for Jennifer, for Jacqueline to take a little time off for some personal business. She got married. And upon her return from the office, there were so many requests that all funding was obligated, used up. Is this a time to stop? Nope. Since she made an urgent request to get more money and was successful, and they kept going. The entire county operation kept going. While this program focused on rental assistance, utilities were also a key aspect of the program. So the water and sewer staff, composed of Chris Hall, Charlene Jones, Lisa Kreps, James Ritter, and Tony Zin, made vital contributions by providing updated customer bills, money bills, delaying shut-offs. Ever been in a house that had the water shut off? Not a good thing. So they did all this for clients who applied for the help. Lisa was proactive in informing Calvert's residents about the program by including an informational flyer with the household water and sewer bills. This program is still ongoing. It was a good idea then, and it's a good idea now. It's worth noting that due to the successful implementation and coordination achieved by the staff, Calvert was the first on the state's list for additional funding and was awarded a second round of Emergency Rental Assistance Program funds. These twenty-eight employees from six departments redefined the term cross-functional team because you can't tell right now who's in which department, really. And that made the program successful. They provide another powerful example of how much can be accomplished with a coordinated, collaborative, and interdepartmental effort. The ERC is join, is honored to join the Board of County Commissioners in recognizing these exceptional coworkers for assisting citizens, landlords, and others during the COVID pandemic. We thank this team for their extraordinary effort and for being part of the reason that Calvert County is an awesome place to live and work. Finally, thank you to the commissioners for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee and for giving us a forum to recognize Calvert County's truly extraordinary workforce. Congratulations. And now Jennifer Moreland, and I think Sharon Strand may also want to say some things.
I'll be brief because you guys have been troopers. Thank you, everyone, for your wait. Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. There is a poem that talks about COVID-nineteen, which is titled, "We Are Not in the Same Boat." It talks about while we face the same storm, the circumstances surrounding our COVID-nineteen experience were very different and still are. It ends, "We are different ships looking to survive. Let everyone navigate their route with respect, empathy, and responsibility." What I wanted to say about this interdepartmental special team is that they always manage to see the big picture, act resourcefully, resourcefully, compassionately, and efficiently for our citizens. I hope this is a reminder of the critical work that we, each of you, are called to do in your career with Calvert County Government as county employees. You did it so well, and you continue to do it so well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. I just want to reiterate what Jennifer said. And one of the comments that I received from people on my staff is, wow, we're really helping someone. And we don't get to see that every day in our department where we're outreach and helping our citizens. So I just wanted to thank all of you for helping our citizens make it through this unprecedented time. Thank you.
What do you say, Kevin? If you can see the camera, you can see it, right? Very good. One, two, three. Three, sit.
Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, a little worried. Yeah, right. Right. Don't worry, she'll get you back. We're only two hours behind. So the next item on the agenda is consent. Item one, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment Zero Five Nine CIP. Item two, Department of Public Works Automated Banking Services Agreement, SECUATM. Item three, Department of Human Resources Local Government Insurance Trust. Item four, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation ITB Twenty Twenty One dash zero seven three. Are there any objections to those items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Those, the consent agenda will be adopted as presented. The next item on the agenda is new business. Department of Public Works Winter Storm Twenty Twenty Two Tree Debris Fee Waiver. Ms. Maggert and Mr. Ritter.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Good to see you both.
Yeah, I'm Heather Maggert, Solid Waste Division Chief.
James Ritter, I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works for Enterprise Funds.
The background is that the Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division accepts tree debris from county residents, businesses, and out-of-county customers year-round as a chargeable item. Tree debris brought to appeal landfill is processed by a brush grinding contractor to create mulch that is available onsite to our county residents at no charge. Discussion, when storms cause widespread damage to trees, it has been the practice of the Board of County Commissioners to approve tree debris waiver periods during which residents may take their tree debris to appeal landfill at no charge. In early January twenty twenty-two, the county experienced a winter storm event that resulted in significant widespread tree damage. A tree debris fee waiver period was granted between the dates of January seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. During the tree debris, tree debris fee waiver period, the Solid Waste Division received three hundred and two point seven seven tons of tree debris from county residents. Fiscal impact, the tree debris is a chargeable material for all customers at the current rate of seventy-five, sixty-five per ton for county residents and eighty-four oh five per ton for all other customers. If the three hundred and two point seven seven tons had been collected during a non-fee waiver period, it would have resulted in revenue equal to twenty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents for the Solid Waste Division. During the waiver period, no revenue was collected, yet an expense of fourteen thousand seventy-eight dollars was incurred to grind the tree debris brought in under the waiver. The conclusion or recommendation, the Solid Waste Division asked that the B O C C reimburse the Solid Waste Division for lost revenue of two thousand, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents due to the storm-related tree debris fee waiver period between January seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, motions?
Mr. President, I move that the board reimburse the Solid Waste Division for lost revenue of twenty-two thousand nine oh four point five five from the commissioner's contingency due to the storm-related tree debris waiver period from January seventh to February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Rachel, let the record show Commissioner McConkey's out of the room, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item eight on the agenda is for presentation, Department of Budget and Finance, Board of Education FY twenty twenty-three budget.
Doc Edie, we have taken the liberty of starting to get you your own parking spaces. You just be.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget. Um, I'll read the brief memo and then I'll turn it over to the Board of Education for their introduction and to go through their presentation. Background, the Board of Education will be in person to present their FY twenty-three budget on April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. County staff has prepared the commissioner's budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, totaling three hundred and forty-five million. The BOE has requested an increase of nine million one hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars over fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to their budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Staff has included a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. It says in the commissioner's budget, but that's in the staff recommended budget. The commissioner's budget includes a hundred and thirty-four million seven hundred and fifty dollars and two, two, seven hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars, which is three point eight lower than the BOE request of the one forty-three, eight seventy-eight, eight ninety-nine. Fiscal impact to be determined by the Board of County Commissioners' direction. Conclusion, recommendation, after the presentation, staff seeks direction for the, from the Board of County Commissioners, on changes to the commissioner's budget to the adopted budget. on changes to the Commissioner's budget to the adopted budget on the funding allocation for the Board of Education.
Good afternoon. I'm Edie Hutchins, Chief Financial Officer for Calvert County Public Schools. The superintendent has presented a budget of $246.4 million for fiscal year 2023. Our adopted budget for 2022 was $232.6 million, which shows a net increase of $13.7 million over the fiscal year. I've done that.
And as we have shared with you before, these are bigger major increases for FY 23 that weren't a part of FY 22. It includes $580,000 for maintenance of our high school athletic fields. Future Ready is our one-to-one laptop program, which, thank goodness, we were initiating in the fall of 2020. And so we were ready for what happened with the pandemic. Salaries, $3.1 million. Bus contracts, you're well aware of the changes that were made this year for compensation for bus contractors and salaries for their drivers, $3.5 million. Utilities, expected $1.1 million increase. Fixed charges, that's affiliated with salaries, of course, but the bigger piece of that is the state's additional charge for retirement, which is...
The increase is $1.3 million.
$1.3 million. And the Board has requested that we add four guidance counselors and two gifted teachers. Next slide. And as we've said before, you know, it's still yet to be understood, all the details of the blueprint. But it does require that we demonstrate that our teachers have had a 10% increase in between FY 19 and FY 24. It requires the implementation of a career ladder in FY 25, requires beginning salary of $60,000 for first-year teachers by FY 27. So there are... It is a vibrant future for some folks, and a lot's got to be done, a lot of decisions yet to be made. That's it.
So does this salary increase of 3.1 go towards the 10% Kerwin requirement?
It is. My understanding is the interpretation is that the 1% COLA does, the STEP does not. And that is what's in contract for our staff for FY 23, a STEP and a COLA.
So under revenues of the state, what is the foundation program?
That is the core amount of money that we receive from the state of Maryland per pupil, based on a per pupil. And the foundation is the crux of the amount that we get, but then there are add-on pieces for transportation, for special education, compensatory education, which is based on our free and reduced meals enrollment. So the foundation is the meat of our funding from the state.
And I'm sorry. And what does that go to? The foundation program covers what particular items in the budget?
None of our expenditure lines are tied to specific revenue sources.
So you can spend that $9 million any way you want?
Correct. It's general fund, it's discretionary dollars. There are a lot of steps that are taken to determine the final number. But in the end, there is no tracking back to the state to say, okay.
No ties.
No ties.
It doesn't have to go to this or that. There are things here that have strings, but the foundation program doesn't.
So for instance, for transportation, if the state awards us $5 million for transportation, we spend well beyond $5 million for transportation. So it's very easy to say, yes, we spent all of the money they gave us for transportation. And a similar thing with special education.
So Sharon, based on the sheet I see before us, we are $5 million apart?
Correct.
And you've got plugged in 3.8?
No, we actually have plugged into the Commissioner's budget 1.34 now. The staff recommended budget was 1.38.
But you had that plugged in before.
We had that plugged in to the staff recommended budget, and then changes were made to the Commissioner's budget, correct.
Is that money still available?
If you would like it to be, yes.
Right answer.
She's on to you pretty quick. Didn't take that one.
So we've had lots of discussions, and you know, you've heard me say several times, we don't have $9 million to provide you today. And we've asked for anyone to prioritize the list instead of us using our priorities. But the response has always been the same. That hasn't changed today, has it?
It has not. You know, we have different responsibilities. We have a responsibility on our side to plan for the next year, to calculate what that might cost, and to then ask you for what we need beyond what can be paid for by other general fund revenues, the state and some of the local discretionary. Your responsibility is to tell us how much you're going to give us. And then we figure it out. We've been there before.
I think we're going to do that.
All right, that'd be great.
I got one question.
Sure.
And the money that you're asking, is any of that going towards special education programs or anything?
So I was going to say, this shortfall isn't... I don't want to call it a shortfall. The additional increase isn't tied to a specific item. But again, when we look at what the overall increases are in our budget, revisiting the $3.5 million for transportation, salaries, so we're looking at it as a big pot, if you will.
Right. Initially, the superintendent's budget was considered flat with regard to increases in no new positions, things like that, except for the fact that there were some... Some of the initial monies from the state for Kerwin was previously set aside and reported separately as a grant that was folded into the state funding. So those positions were just moved from... It's more of an accounting thing, that was paid for by the state in the same way. So there was an increase in total number of special ed positions. Then, as you are aware, the Board of Education had heard from lots of folks asking that we increase the... Or reduce the student-to-staff ratio for guidance counselors in a few of our largest elementary schools and one middle school, as well as to... We've been trying to get started with the gifted program for a while with a few additional staff. Request has never been... We've never been able to afford to add the staff. This year, the Board asked that we squeeze a little bit out of what was in the superintendent's budget in order to afford the six additional staff members.
So Edie, in the last couple of years, have you done any budget reductions?
Of the overall budget?
Of operational budget?
Our operational budget has not decreased over the years. It continually increases as our costs increase. There are specific areas within the budget that may decrease from year to year while other areas increase. So there's always some shifting that happens with our budgets and costs.
In FY 15, we did major decreases, and we reduced a significant number of positions because of the situation we were in. And we cut a lot, not just positions, but a lot of other accounts got reduced as well. But we started to gain students, a few at a time. The enrollment started to go up. And then, of course, we all know what we've been through the last couple of years. It's just been... No way to compare it to anything normal.
Because last year, we did 3% reduction across the board on the operational budget, trying to meet. And depending on what we give you today, we may have to do that again. And it does bother me a little bit that I make my staff give up their programs, you know, to fund yours. But that's me.
Well, like I said, we have to deal with whatever our anticipated revenues are. We have to consider whether there should be cuts or whether, rather than cut, we are digging to savings account, you know, those sorts of things, just like you.
And that's the situation we're in today, as you probably already know. You know that we're not sure about the revenues from Dominion for the next coming year, and we're still figuring out COVID and its impact and how that moves forward. We all had surpluses last year because, you know, you plan for the worst, and luckily, that worked out for us, and so we...
Plus the help of some of the federal grants.
Yeah, there was some help. Yeah, helped all of us. So, you know, this year, Sharon's done her best to provide a projection on revenues. And just like any other year, until we get into next year, we really don't know what that's going to be. So, you know, the unfortunate part is, you know, last year, we did the 3% cut, and then we ended up with a $15 million surplus, which makes us look like idiots. But, you know, we're trying to be conservative here and make sure that we don't spend more than we actually have. So we depend on staff to do the best they can to project revenues. So when I say, you know, we don't have $9 million to give you, it's not because it's all about dollars and cents and how we distribute those dollars and cents. So, questions?
Dr. Curry, I would like to very much disagree with you on the fact that we have different responsibilities here. I personally feel, and I've been trying very hard, to realize that our responsibilities are to our employees, whether or not they be on the teacher's side, the staff's side, the county's side, the sheriff's department, the corrections. I think that we all owe the same responsibilities to those people, to our parents of all of our children that are going to the schools. I think that we have the same responsibilities. And I'd like, and I really look forward to being able to work with you guys in an open manner to be able to come up with the good ideas and the good solutions in order to be able to make sure that all of our responsibilities are taken care of. So I think we have the common responsibilities, not different. Thank you.
So for me...
Oh, you want to say something?
Yeah. So Sharon, so if we funded the full amount, how much are we short?
We would be short about $2.5, $3 million.
Dr. Curry, a second ago, you said you may have to reach into your savings account. How much was in there? And I'm not talking your personal, I'm talking, you know...
The... I'll refer that to Ms. Hutchins.
We currently have about $24 million total in fund balance.
Much of it is. And has been traditionally earmarked certain fund for health insurance overruns, certain fund for increased cost in fuel for transportation, which wasn't, hasn't been drawn on for a few years. But certainly in the years to come, there's a few specific accounts that have been designated.
Just clarify, you said $24 million, not $2.4 million, correct?
Correct.
In fund balance?
Correct.
That means available for rainy day or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Now, is that... Would you characterize that as unrestricted and restricted, or the $24 million?
So we have about $14 million that's committed or restricted, if you will, and then $10 million unrestricted.
Unrestricted?
Yes.
Because that... I just wanted to clarify that point. That's the parlance in our world with our budget, so...
Is that after OPEV contributions, you have $10 million unrestricted?
So with OPEV, because we had to increase our operating budget to make that contribution, the fund balance for that doesn't change until we close out this fiscal year. So whatever deficit remains this year is what will then change the unassigned fund balance and reduce it for that OPEV contribution.
We've watched ours actually go down, you know, from, you know, when we were very aggressive in the early days of really trying to get that. So are you anticipating your OPEV to follow suit with that? Or have you had any, from the actuary, any, you know, projections of where you think OPEV will be?
As far as our liability, our OPEV liability?
Well, your contribution, OPEV contribution.
Now, with OPEV, on our part, the contributions for OPEV have primarily, for the most part, been on-behalf payments made by the county. There have been several years where if we had a surplus, like last year, we contributed an additional amount to the BOE's trust, share of the trust.
But you don't foresee a big bill coming around the corner or anything like that?
No.
No, we're not drawing on it at this time.
No.
And we will point out that when we had Funding Formula, we had an agreement that we would limit our unassigned fund balance to five. And anything over five would go to OPEV.
That's great.
Mr. President, I have a question. On slide, the previous slide, with the major increases for FY 23, if you will, could you please just, I guess, would you characterize the utilities as your projections for this year? The cost of...
Those are estimates that were determined by school facilities based on cost projections that they received for fiscal year 23 for water and sewer, electricity, as well as heating oil.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And fixed charges, would you say, are those projections as well?
Well, the retirement, that is a known. We know for certain that our retirement cost is increasing $1.3 million. We have other costs like workers' compensation. We have specific contributions we've received from the Maryland Association of Boards of Education for workers' compensation contributions, as well as property and liability insurance. So those are known numbers.
Okay. And that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
That's what I... Yes. And the bus contract contracts are what they are?
Correct. Those are exactly what we're planning to pay our contractors next year.
Certainly, we have... I believe we have room to reduce that a little bit, but it comes from further planning, bus routing being more efficient with routing. We're trying to get a commitment from parents this year to say whether or not they're going to put their child on the bus or not. Because we do have buses pulling into a school, sometimes with just eight kids on. And we planned for 38. And certainly, if we knew, we could count on who's going to be driven to school and who's going to ride the bus. We could... It would make some runs longer, perhaps. But we should... It would be more efficient if we picked up a whole lot more students before coming to school.
With that being said, however, there's always the wild card with out-of-county transportation. If we have students who have a non-public placement, it could be just one student going to a new facility. We have to transport that student, so that would then add to our transportation costs.
So Sharon, you say if we fully funded, we would be 3.2?
2.5.
2.... I'm sorry, how much short?
2 to 3 million estimated, short from the 9 million.
And that number up there is roughly 9?
Yeah, so the Board of Education is requesting 9 point... Almost $9.2 million from us.
So if you have 10 discretionary, you could take 5 of that and still leave that 5 threshold that you were carrying in the past. That would change that.
Certainly, that'd be one of the things for us to consider.
I mean, that would change... That would change that number. Then that would put us... We would still have about 2.5, or actually 2.8 our way for other things. But I don't know with reshuffling that pot where that puts us. But that would be the threshold that they were used to carrying was 5 million, so...
If our MOE is 3.4? The MOE increase is 3.4?
About.
About?
Mm-hmm. Well, our MOE only went up by a dollar.
Right, but in millions, the... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Versus...
The old MOU that...
Right, okay.
UMOE. And there was, if I'm not mistaken, a minimum required local share in the state calculations, I think it was 134.
Yep.
Well, what... Yeah.
It wasn't real... It was an average, not really...
The increase from last year to this year on our side was 3.4. Is that correct?
So the calculation for the new MOE, based on the June 21 calculation, is the 134, 134 million.
Right.
If you're comparing it to the MOE that was of April of last year, that was 132.4 million.
And it was a rolling average that the...
Right, correct.
A dollar more.
Yes. Now, with the state legislature, they passed a law that says that funding, local funding for fiscal year 23, is the greater of either the... either the maintenance of effort level determined by the Department of Legislative Services, which is about 134 million for our current year funding, which is 134 million. So, you're dealing with a difference of maybe a couple of hundred thousand dollars between the two.
Hypothetically, if, if we sit there and look at the MOE, there's going to be quite a few million short of what your request is of the extra nine million. I believe we're, we're committed 3 million into that nine million, give or take, which leaves six there to.
That we've got to figure out.
Now, it's my understanding, the back when we had some issues with some buses, we all got together, or not we all, but certain leaders got together and we figured, you know what, we can make this work if we each take a chunk out of this and we can make it work. If we were to, because you have that savings account, you have the money available in there, if we were able to get up to the four and a half, five and a half range, is that going to be enough to be able for you guys say, you know what, we care enough and we'll make sure that we get all the people's salaries taken care of and all the staff and everybody will be taken care of and covered?
Well, well, like I said, certainly we have that option. And, and as we've, we've tried to present what it's going to cost to do what we'd like to do next year, what we think we have to do next year, these are all pretty much have-tos. And so, we'll, still, the, well, well, it's in the hands of the Board of Education as to whether or not. The, the problem with using fund, unencumbered fund balance is that next year, I mean, it's, it, all things being equal, no loss of enrollment, we're going to ask you to give it to us again. If we've got zero in the bank, we, we're, we need you to cover that eventually, if all, all things being equal. So, that's the challenge for the county commissioners, you are funders. You know, we don't have the ability to make money. And what, we do make some from some savings and certainly we put it back in the system. But if, if all things being equal, eventually it's not there and eventually we, we need you to cover that.
So, so here's my thought, gentlemen. My number is 7.1. And that gets them salaries, bus contracts, and the new positions. And that means that puts us even according to Sharon's numbers. She thinks she has that.
I, I could do between like five and six. I don't know if I could stretch to 7.1.
Come on, Sharon.
Come on, Sharon.
Well, you know where I'm going because we did agree to take care of the bus drivers and I don't want to hear that we didn't provide enough money for salaries and take care of the bus contracts. That's what I don't want to hear, because they're not going to agree to fund what we want. So, once we write them a check, they're going to do whatever they're going to do, but at least we can say we gave you enough money to cover those items. And we may have to scrape the barrel and find a million dollars, but.
Speaking of a half a million.
Half a million.
Hey, if we're in the halves.
I didn't say half a million.
If we're in the halves, if we're into halves, it may help. Looking at the budgets over the FY '19, '20, '21, '22, and then finally getting to FY '23 for that 580,000, how in the world have you guys not spent any money in the past on field maintenance?
Um, this is completely new. We've done field maintenance.
Okay.
But this is a whole re-crowning, which we want to, that this is, is, is getting equipment in and tearing up the field with a bulldozer.
Gotcha.
Building a whole new crown because we don't have good drainage and doing some major stuff and then reseeding and the, and deep tin aerating and all those sorts of things. Uh, we, we have, I can tell you, we have recently reviewed bids for that and the company we're working with is, it, it may not get to till next spring, but it is something that all of our fields need. Of course, some of you have heard from folks who would like us to spend a whole lot more and have artificial turf and that would, that would be nice as well, but you know, that's a whole different price tag.
And 580 is light. Those fields need money.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, that's just scratching the surface. That's just, um, so, I saw that initial number. I was like, hmm, okay.
Yeah, it's a re-crowning and reseeding and.
And they could always come back in January and ask for more money and we could see where we are, but we've done that before with others.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just told Commissioner Gadway I was going to make a proposition.
Oh.
And I want to publicly state that it's not for, towards him, so.
Wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir. Um, I'm not returning. And Dr. Curry, your time is up, sir, right?
Agreed.
Okay.
You want to play some golf?
Well, before we do that, um, I want to, I want to, you know, you, my fellow board members to at least consider having me and, and I would like to indulge the county administrator and, uh, basically meet with representatives of the board with your board's permission, if you can go back and, and tell them that I'm ready, willing, and able to sit down, no commitments on our part, but sit down and work this out and get it done.
What are you going to work on?
Well, I want to sit down our deficit that we have, um, our shortfall. Um, I, I, this is a totally extemporaneous initiative, but, you know, I think it's worthy of at least trying to bridge a gap.
Well, I think we're close.
Oh, we're definitely are.
Close. And, and I definitely understand Dr. Curry's reservation. I was taught when I got here too, fund balance is great, but it's good for one-time purchases. It's not, it's a Band-Aid. Um, it feels like every year is a Band-Aid with everything that we do. It seems like, you know, it's no matter if we're here, we're here. It always seems like we're, um, but I'm with whatever the will of the board is. If, if Commissioner Williams, if that's something that, that the board wants to do, I, I'm fine with it. Um.
If I could, if I could clarify, if, if there would be support for Mr. Hans's position to be sure to cover what the bus contracts and, and salaries, that just leaves, you know, a couple of million for us. I'd have no problem telling you today that we'll cover that with fund balance.
See, that's what I've been wanting to hear. Thank you, Dr. Curry.
And we were.
We're just trying to meet in the middle somewhere. That's all I'm trying to do.
I want to reserve the right to say.
Actually.
I mean, wouldn't you, if you were in my seat, say, I might have to make some cuts?
Didn't, I was thoroughly distracted. Could I get you to please repeat what you said, I'm only going to.
Don't worry, he's good.
I was going to say, can we make sure that Daryl got that?
Yeah, Daryl, did he get it? Okay.
Of course, the final decision would be for the Board of Education, but that would be my recommendation too. And the final decision is for us, for Sharon, to find another million dollars.
So, that would be 6.6, Sharon, according to that slide. And how feasible is 6.6?
I could probably work with 6.6.
You know, you sound like Scotty from Star Trek, you know, when like everything's hitting the fan and Kirk screams, he's got two minutes to make it happen and we're all watching the.
So, we're going to be presenting the commissioner's budget on May 17th in public session and, um, you know, we will have, I will be able to report to you prior to that if we can find the 6.6 or we would have to come back to the Board of Education. The, the current request now would not be included in the commissioner's budget. It would be a, a change between the commissioner's budget and the adopted budget.
Because it's been printed.
Excuse me?
Because it's been printed.
Correct.
And we're not going to reprint.
Inadvertised.
Inadvertised. So, we're not going to start that process ever again.
And just so I and everybody else gets this wrapped around my head that by increasing this, that means next year, that's the bare minimum.
When you start.
And then we go from there, right?
Well, remember Kerwin shuffles the deck.
Yeah.
When Kerwin hits, it completely reshuffles the deck. So, everything we're doing now is really immaterial, because once Kerwin comes in, it's a whole new ballgame. And then from there, we're going to know where we are going forward. And that's why I've always been very hesitant, walking very slowly, because they will have the say.
Right, but this is going to be the minimum, the new minimum, from what I understand.
With the procedures that we do today, the way, the way we've been doing business, but it, but that is, like I said, in the very near future, that is going to change.
It's the new minimum.
Yeah, the, uh, the, the Kerwin requirement for staff to have had a 10% increase between FY '19 and FY '24 is quickly coming. And we think we need about $5 million, a bit more than $5 million to make that happen. And that is, now, when you think about it, once again, Kerwin just focused on the teaching staff. So, can we, can we give everybody a, a, that's about another 5% raise except?
Right.
Or everybody.
Correct.
Which is going to be more than 5 million.
The state has about 800 million put away for Kerwin. But you know, that's just going to be a one-time thing.
Right.
If our cost got 5 million, they may give you a couple of million the first year, but then that just goes away.
And we know there's been a lot said about, oh, yeah, it's, it's all in there. It's not.
No, and what about classroom sizes? How many more teachers will be for classroom size? I mean, so when that, it is not going to be simple. It is going to be very expensive, very complex. Yes. And so, hence why it's so essential that we all talk very regularly, because it's brand new. It is something that we've never done. So, it's essential that from the ground up that we're all understanding as it comes to us.
I don't have a motion on the table, gentlemen. We've had a nice discussion. We made great progress. Thank you. I really do appreciate that. But I still need a motion.
Are we looking for a motion?
Yes, sir.
So, I, I'll make a motion that we, we increase by 6.6, if that's the correct number. And then that would.
Our appropriation.
Right, for our, our funding.
6.6 what?
Thousand.
Dollars, I'll do that.
Dollars, 6.6 dollars, 6 dollars, 60 cents.
You know, you know where that was going.
Yeah.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second that we provide 6.6 million to the Board of Education for fiscal year '23. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you having fun?
Next item on the agenda is Department of Planning and Zoning.
Oh. Motion to approve.
Yeah. Here comes the fun.
Uh, this will be easy.
Yeah.
Afternoon.
Afternoon, gentlemen.
You need to move your microphone right up there, Joe.
Joe Hawkeshurst, Division Chief of Inspections and Permits. Dale Weems, the chairman of our building board, is with me this afternoon.
You're not keeping good company today.
I'll read my memo.
That's not true. Thank you, coast.
The Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation has adopted the 2018 International Building Code and the 2018 International Residential Code as the Maryland Building Performance Standards. Local jurisdictions in the state of Maryland are charged with establishing local amendments to these codes and for implementation and enforcement of them. Pursuant to the Maryland Annotated Code, Local Government Article, Section 13-901, Calvert County Commissioners of Calvert County, Maryland, may adopt and amend the building code for Calvert County. Calvert County Building Board has prepared recommendations for adoption of and amendments to the 2018 building codes for consideration. Attached is a draft of Chapter 18 of the Code of Calvert County showing the revisions and amendments approved through the adoption of prior versions of the code as well as the building board's recommendations for amendments to the 2018 version. Staff has prepared a presentation highlighting these recommendations as well as some of the significant changes in the 2018 building codes. There are no fiscal impacts. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners review and discuss the proposed code adoption and direct staff to schedule a public hearing. So, again, our purpose here is to discuss the recommendations of the building board for the adoption of the 2018 codes. The code is in two parts. The International Residential Code are provisions for one and two-family dwellings and townhomes. The International Building Code is essentially every other building. These would be, um, commercial structures, publicly occupied spaces, places of assembly, institutional, industrial warehouses, and so forth. In addition to making recommendations to you on code adoption, the Calvert County Building Board also serves as a Board of Appeals. So, if there are questions about interpretations of the code, a contractor or homeowner can approach the board and their findings are final. They, they would hold true. The building board also reviews and issues Calvert County home builders licenses. There is work that is exempt from permitting, one-story detached accessory structures less than 150 square feet, prefabricated swimming pools that are less than 24 inches deep, replacement of shingles and siding, and replacement of windows or doors where there is no change in the rough opening size. This would also include things like playground equipment and retaining walls up to three feet in height. A lot of the adopting ordinance deals with administrative items, the requirements for making an application or for permit issuance, the time limits of applications and permits, and provisions for serving notices of violation and violation penalties. So, again, we, we've picked a few of the, the changes that will come with the 2018 adoption, just to, to make you aware. The 2018 code will require pathways when solar panels are installed on a roof, pathways to the rooftop, to the ridge, so that a firefighter can have access to that point of the roof for purposes of venting the roof in the event of a fire. The current code requires that any walking surface that is 30 inches or more above grade or the adjacent surface to have a, a guardrail over the entire surface. The, the new code has provisions that would only require that guardrail where the surface is more than 30 inches above grade. So, there have been instances where a homeowner didn't necessarily want a guardrail across their front porch, but because one end of it might be over 30 inches, the code would have required it. And with this provision, this change, you could just put that guardrail on the side that was more than 30 inches above grade. The current code requires physical interconnection between smoke alarms in a dwelling, so that if one alarm sounds, all the alarms would sound. The 2018 code takes advantage of some, some new technology with wireless connectivity, so that, um, that, that hardwired or physical connection is not required. This is a positive thing because the code also requires that when you're doing renovations in a home, whether it's an addition or remodel or something, you have to install alarms per the current code standard. Some older homes don't have alarms in each bedroom like is required today. And it often becomes difficult to make that interconnection, pulling that wire. So, this, the wireless technology will allow that to be much simpler.
Are these being brought down by the state or is that just?
Yes, sir. The, the Maryland Building Performance Standard is state law that deals with building code adoption. And it does require that, that all jurisdictions in the state of Maryland be on the same version of the same codes.
Yeah, I just want the public to know that so they think just Calvert County's not doing it.
Yes, sir. Um, the surrounding jurisdictions have already moved to the 2000, 2018 code.
Just as a question on that, though, it appears to me that they have not taken the same approach that we are as far as drafting these other carve-outs that we are going to, for example, follow the, the Fire Marshal Code. They are just taking the full International Building Code and implying it and ruling with an iron fist saying, this is it, this is it only. And they're ignoring, for example, um, bear with me a second, I had it marked out. The, the fire. The, the fire, uh, I'm looking for it. I just had it up there.
Well, the life safety code and the, and the fire code.
Yeah, 101 dot 4 dot 5, fire prevention. You guys are explaining in this, and I commend you for that, saying that Maryland COMAR 29 dot 06 dot 01 overrules the International Building Code.
In, in some instances, yes, sir.
Right.
And, and there are contradictions sometimes, and we work closely with the Office of the State Fire Marshal, and, and we, we let them take the lead primarily.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going above and beyond state fire code.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Let's say somebody's putting a detached garage on. You don't have to do that, right? You wouldn't have to put the fire alarms in the house?
No, sir. It's just in, in the, in the dwelling itself.
So if you do an addition or anything on the inside?
Correct. We exclude, like, decks and, and porches also from that requirement. So work outside.
Perfect. Just wait for my phone to ring, that's all.
Much of the new code deals with energy efficiency, and it's the one thing that, uh, Maryland Building Performance Standard doesn't allow local jurisdictions to weaken. You can make these provisions stronger, but it doesn't allow you to lessen them. Uh, so, so with this code adoption, there'll be increases in the required R values in walls and ceilings. We're going from R13 in a wall to R20, R38 in the ceilings to R49. Not less than 90% of installed lighting can have, I mean, they must have high-efficiency bulbs, LED bulbs, which, which most do nowadays. And the code does not allow, um, gas filed, gas-fired appliances to have a continuously burning pilot light. It must be an electronic ignition for those appliances. To test for energy efficiency, the new code requires that we evaluate the building envelope for air tightness. Um, this is a lower door test where they, uh, once the house is at the point of being fully insulated and air sealed, this, the equipment tests for the number of air exchanges that will occur in an hour, and it must be three or fewer. This is, uh, an inspection that would be done by a third party, um, and would have to be, that those results would have to be provided to us before the, the project could move forward with inspections.
So now, home builders, go ahead.
And that's pretty close to, if you remember, the Smako Smart House program that they had years ago. That was a requirement of that at the time. So now this has come into code, not an option.
So the builder has to hire, or the homeowner has to hire?
Builder would have to hire, or the general contractor.
So, before they turn the house over to the individual, they gotta have, the test is done?
The current code requires emergency egress out of every sleeping room or bedroom, and it's essentially a window that creates a minimum of five square feet of opening to allow for a person to escape or for, allow a, a rescuer or firefighter into the space. For, for some reason, the current code excluded basement bedrooms in homes, I'm sorry, the, the 2018 code excludes basement bedrooms in homes that are equipped with sprinkler systems, which, in, in discussion, the Board just didn't felt make any sense. It doesn't exclude any other bedroom in the house. And so this is one of very few, uh, new provisions that, that the Board is recommending that we not adopt, and that we, we remove the exception for the basement bedrooms in sprinklered homes.
And the thought behind it was, because the, they were saying two means of egress. One being the stairs to get back up to the first floor, one being a back door. Well, if the fire is between you and the stairs, and you can't get there, then there's a reason to have that egress window in that bedroom.
And so that is essentially our presentation. Just some highlights. What we're looking for is some, some direction to, to go to public hearing, so that we can not adopt these codes.
Dale, good?
It's nothing earth-shattering that's not already going on all around us. I mean, they're doing it in St. Mary's, they're doing it in Charles, I mean, and most of the guys, I mean, are already doing it anyway. It's just easier to do it throughout than it is to do it different in one county or the other, so.
So we're not going to hear, you're the only ones doing this? Why are you doing this?
No, no, no. It's already going on. No.
I'm good.
Mr. President, I, I move that we direct staff to schedule a public hearing on the adoption of local amendments to the 2018 International Building Code, IBC, and International Residential Code, IRC.
Second.
I motion the second to move forward. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good day. Hope you had lunch. We're gonna have dinner, looks like. We gotta be getting close.
Uh, hey, you are setting a record for a long-
Yeah, longest meeting ever.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. With me is Rachel O'Shea, the zoning planner, and if it's okay with you, we're gonna skip, skip reading the memo. She's gonna go straight to the presentation.
Please.
And we are presenting text amendments in a work session in anticipation of the public hearing on Thursday night.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Purpose of today's work session is to review and discuss the proposed text amendment cases 2101A, 2101B, and 21 dash 02. A joint public hearing is scheduled with the Planning Commission for this Thursday, April 28th, 2022, to receive public comment. So the text amendment 2101A, proposed amendment to the Calvert County zoning ordinance and to the Prince Frederick zoning ordinance. There was a previous text amendment 15 dash 08A. This increased the maximum density in the Newtown sub-district of the Prince Frederick Town Center from 14 units per acre to 24 units per acre. This request is to actually reverse the previous text amendment and decrease the maximum density in the Newtown sub-district back to 14 units per acre. So this is the text change, um, in, um, Chapter 3 of Site Design, permitted number of dwelling units. And we're just taking out, um, the additional sentence that increased it to 24. So it'll go back to the 14 units per acre, which is, uh, what the rest of the sub-districts of Prince Frederick is at, density-wise.
And just so the public knows, um, back when that was originally done, I guess the, uh, stormwater management regulations had changed, so people couldn't get that many units on the property with stormwater management, correct?
That's correct. We haven't had any projects come in-
Right.
-over 14 units per acre.
Right.
Agency comments received include Department of E- Economic Development, that was in support of the text amendment, and the Economic Development Advisory Commission, that was also in support. So we'll move on to text amendment 21 dash 01B. This is a proposed amendment to the Calvert County zoning ordinance, as well as the Prince Frederick zoning ordinance. So it was again, another previous text amendment 15 dash 08B, which removed a condition from all dwelling types in the Village District of the Prince Frederick Town Center, which had been required to have at least 50% of the site be reserved for commercial office or industrial uses. The request now is to reinstate, um, the previous text amendment and bring back that 50% requirement, uh, while also allowing the Planning Commission to flex the ratio. So this is the, from the use chart in the Calvert County zoning ordinance, that's just changing the Village District for the dwelling types from permitted to conditionally permitted. And then these are the, um, conditions for the different, um, dwelling types, and we're just adding back in the, uh, Village Sub-District. This is again, adding back in the Village Sub-District. We also took out, um, the requirement for 50% of the length of the building be at least 20 feet wide. We got rid of that, and so that changed some of the, um, the text. So we rearranged some things to then move down the, um, Planning Commission flexibility, which is the next slide. And this allows the Planning Commission to flex the ratio. The Planning Commission may flex the percentage ratio of the required condition to a minimum of 40% commercial if it can be demonstrated that the proposed development will either contribute comprehensively to a housing mix within the town center or contribute to a true integrated mixed-use, including but not limited to residential, commercial, office, and/or industrial uses. Agency comments received for this text amendment included Department of E- Economic Development, which was in support, and the Economic Development Advisory Commission, which was also in support of the text amendment. So now we'll move into text amendment 21 dash 02. At the last, at the last, um-
You're in charge.
Yes, sir. Can we eat?
At the last, uh, BOCC work session, it was requested to re-review some of the history of how we got to this text amendment, so I will review that first. The Department of Planning and Zoning was directed to propose an amendment to increase the requirement of the use of transferable development rights. The request was to change the TDR sliding scale to be more equitable in terms of housing type by size and number of bedrooms. The text amendment was presented to the Board of County Commissioners on August 11th, 2020, and was approved to move forward to the Planning Commission. The PC work session was held August 19th, 2020, but the PC did not recommend the text amendment move forward and to be distributed for agency comment. They advised the TDR sliding scale be reviewed and analyzed during the Prince Frederick, uh, Town Center Master Plan update. At a following work session with the Board of County Commissioners, it was requested to reconvene the TDR committee that originally met back in 2015, when the TDR sliding scale was put into place. They asked for the TDR committee to reexamine the county's TDR program and make recommendations. So this was the 2020 TDR committee. In addition to the farming community representatives and the developer community representatives that met in the original, uh, 2015 TDR committee, Dana Jones from the Housing for All Task Force and Mark Frisco with the Chamber of Commerce were also included to add the perspective of housing advocates for affordable housing to the discussion. So the TDR committee came up with a list of concerns regarding the TDR program. The program is out of balance between the supply and demand of TDRs. TDR price is inaccurate due to the imbalance of the supply and demand, which, if left up to the free market, it drives the TDR price down, which is an inaccurate true value of the TDR. Completing TDR transactions is difficult, time-consuming, costly, and because of it being private negotiations, can often be unreliable. The county's land preservation program is suffering from moratorium placed on the creation of new APDs, agricultural preservation districts, that have been in place for years because of the TDRs being stagnant. So from that list of concerns that the, the committee came up with, they then came up with a list of recommendations for the program. The first being to establish a TDR bank managed by the county. This has been completed, that we started the pilot program, the, the TDR reserve, this past year. Number two, the reinstatement of the previous level of land preservation funding, this was also completed, um, last summer. Number three, retain the current TDR sliding scale, which is what we've been discussing with the proposed text amendment 21 dash 02. Number four, lift the moratorium on creation of new APDs after the Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board's recommended program changes are adopted in the program rules and regulations. This is in process. Number five, continue to allow density to be increased with use of TDRs within Tier 3. This is something that we do today, that they would like to continue in the future. Number six, expand the rural legacy areas to include all the priority preservation areas. And this is also in process. The, um, application for rural legacy expansion has been, um, turned into the state for review. And number seven, continue to waive TDRs for projects that meet senior, affordable, or workforce housing. And this is something that we also do today, that they would like to continue. So the, the committee also discussed, um, the TDR sliding scale, uh, after the BOCC determination, in the fall of 2021. The group agreed that by increasing the TDR requirement in town center would halt town center multifamily projects that are needed for young individuals and beginning families to be able to live within the county. They said that developers cannot make these types of projects economically work with an increase in the TDR requirement. And the group agreed that further investigation was needed regarding town center build-out, the effect of an infrastructure, and the desire and impacts of a town center expansion, before a decision should be made on the changing the TDR sliding scale. The TDR committee recommended the BOCC direct staff to further analyze the TDR sliding scale. And before making changes, they should, uh, analyze again, um, during the Prince Frederick Master Plan update. At the conclusion of the, the next BOCC work session that we had, um, in November regarding the history of the TDR committee and the TDR sliding scale, the BOCC directed staff to move forward with the text amendment to increase the, the TDR requirement. So now we'll run through, um, the, the text amendment. 21 dash 02. This is a proposed amendment to the Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomon Town Center zoning ordinances. This amendment proposes to increase the requirement for the use of transferable development rights, TDRs, based on number of bedrooms. This will affect Prince Frederick Town Center, the Village Ed District, and the Village Residential Office District of the Lesby Town Center, and the Solomons Town Center. The purchase of TDRs is required for all homes constructed above one unit per acre. This is the chart that compares the current TDR sliding scale with the proposed in the text amendment. Now we'll go over, um-
Real quick on the la- if we back up one slide.
Yes.
We've got two that are staying the same. Everything else is going up one, with the exception of a three-bedroom, which is proposed to go up two. So there's actually only one, two, three, there's actually only four categories that are changing.
Yeah, the only one that's staying the same is that first one listed, the single-family detached over 10,000 square feet.
And the one-bedrooms, correct.
And the, the one-bedroom multifamily.
So it's just two and three-bedroom attached, detached, that we're talking about.
So the, the others are going up by one, except for the three-bedroom multifamily, which will actually be going up two, from one to three.
So right now, today, three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and one-bedroom are all charged one. We don't even distinguish between them in the ordinance. It's just multifamily is one. So we're splitting those out. Yeah, correct.
Commissioner Williams, can I get you to two?
On what?
From that first one? Can I get one to two?
Two, one to two? What are you, what are you talking about?
We're one, we're one current, one proposed. Can I get you to two?
So, so this is a work session?
Okay.
We have public comment coming Thursday night. We have a decision made.
You don't need this proposed today?
No.
If we change it, then it, it has to go back to the start.
Gotcha.
This is what we're, we're the one, two, three, three, four, five.
Gotcha.
Am I correct? If we change anything off that, at this point, we start over?
Could they change it during the public hearing, John? They would be making it more restrictive.
Substantive changes like that would have to start from the beginning again.
So we would be going back to re-advertising the public hearing.
Right. What about today?
No, we've already advertised the public hearing.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, please proceed.
Now we'll run through the language changes. This is for the Prince Frederick Town Center zoning ordinance for Chapter 3 Site Design. Prince Frederick is designated as a transfer zone. Purchase of five development rights is required for each single-family detached dwelling on lots averaging greater than 10,000 square feet. Changing from three to four TDRs for each single-family detached dwelling on lots averaging less or equal to 10,000 square feet. From two to three, TDRs for each attached dwelling, uh, three TDRs for each three-bedroom multifamily, two TDRs for each two-bedroom multifamily, and one TDR for each one-bedroom multifamily over one dwelling unit per acre. So then we're continuing with the same language change in the Lesby Town Center zoning ordinance, and then, uh, the same language change in the Solomons Town Center zoning ordinance, which actually occurs in two different sections, so it's got two slides. So the agency comments received for this text amendment, the Department of Economic Development was in support, and they had comments listed in their letter. The Economic Development Advisory Commission was in opposition of the text amendment.
Okay.
So the next step is to review and discuss the proposed text amendment in preparation for the joint public hearing scheduled for this Thursday, the 28th, at the Harriet Brown Community Center.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Any questions, comments?
Prior.
Nope. I'm being heard. Look at that. And, and I didn't, I didn't, uh, dismiss them yet. TDR, 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 TDR. TDR, 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 TDR.
I'm sorry, President, I'm teasing, I think you'd better eat.
Yeah, right.
It's only two o'clock.
It's way past his lunchtime, I know that. Ain't far from bedtime now.
Thank you.
See you Thursday.
All right. See you Thursday. Mr. County Attorney, public comment?
Thank you, sir. If there's anybody who wishes to provide public comment, please make your way to the microphone or raise your hand, because there are still two, three people on the Zoom meeting. Either press star nine if you're on the phone, or use the raise hand function for Zoom. Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution 6 dash 89 to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. Speakers of public comment are also reminded by the Ethics Commission that lobbyists include those who speak to influence public policy and are required to register in advance of their lobbying activities. President, nobody's raised their hand on the Zoom call, and nobody's walked to the microphone.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gadway, are you ready?
Yeah, I'll make myself ready. Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
We had a lot of good public comments today, I appreciate that. We all learn from them, and they make us all better. This last week and a half or so has been extremely busy, extremely well. I did touch earlier on the Rural Lands Preservation, had a great meeting with them. I really appreciate the invite. It was very nice to hear some of the histories that were told about the county. I know everybody that was there has a new appreciation of Christiana Perrin Road, a new appreciation of crab kicking, which I had to, they had to explain. Hopefully, we can get some of those things back. The Chamber of Commerce Legislation Breakfast, I just personally want to thank all of our delegates and senators for representing our county up in Annapolis and fighting for us down here. The Library Thursday had a civil political discussion at Mullies. It was very well-attended, from what I saw, and everybody maintained civility, which was a good thing, even though it's Mullies, so. King's Landing Envirothon, I went down to. I want to thank Don Valensky for walking me through the stations down there. Congrats to all the winners, and good luck in future competitions. CCAT Special Educators Awards, over 60 nominations, it was a great event. I really enjoyed being there, had an opportunity to say a few words, and it was really nice seeing the joy in the eyes of the kids and the parents' faces when those who worked so hard got recognized. It was nice. Prince Frederick, 80 years of service at the firehouse. Congrats to all the award winners. Thanks to each and every member that's there that takes place in making sure stuff happens and that stuff gets responded to. Saturday and Sunday, Southern Maryland Fire Convention and Parade in St. Mary's Bay District, I'll be going down and enjoying the festivities, and I encourage everybody else to as well. Speed round, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gadway. Mr. Hart?
For time, Mr. President, I'll echo Mr. Gadway and move on to you guys.
Commissioner McGonaghy?
Yeah, several of us attended the Prince Frederick Volunteer Rescue Fire Department banquet. It was very well-attended, very good event. And the only other thing I wanted to say is that several weeks ago, Bernie Fowler Jr. put out a message asking that the Calvert Citizens United, please not use Senator Bernie Fowler's name in any more advertisements or mention his name. That out of respect for the family, I would appreciate it if they would not come to our meetings in the future and do that against the will of their family. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. I want to apologize to company two.
And you should.
And I apologize publicly to you, sir.
Hard room today.
In reality, I.
Somebody gave him a Snickers bar.
I responded to your text, sir, because you said, "Where are you at?"
Because you always come.
I always come.
That's right.
But I was at Our Lady Star of the Seas annual gala. The fabulous Hope Caps were there. It was well-attended, it was a great event, they honored.
Father Ken, too. It was his first one, wasn't it?
Um, do you want to?
Oh, my gosh, he is tough today. He is tough, isn't he? What am I hiding behind you?
I was gonna, I was gonna thank him for his good Elvis routine, but I'm scared now.
No, I was gonna say that Commissioner Hart was there, Sheriff Asmond was there.
I need protection, security.
Somebody's angry.
No, um, but they honored Pastor Irwin Beverley Saturday night. And Mike, I even thought, you know, you said I hadn't said any big words a couple weeks ago. So I have one for you to look up tonight, ecumenical.
I'm scared, it's probably directed at me.
So, no, no. It's a good thing, it's, anyway. But all the various churches were in attendance. Reverend Garcia from Christ Church was there, as well, to honor him as one of the founding founders of Smile. And he received the Father Maurice Alexander Award. I wanted to wish my parents a 57-year anniversary last Sunday, but former county commissioner, John Gott Senior, and his wife celebrated 70 years.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, weeks ago, so.
You've been up with him that long?
Right.
That was with the same woman?
Um, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Yes, sir.
So we learned this morning that Jeff Elliot, who's a security deputy here at the courthouse, had a severe heart attack two days ago, is in the hospital in critical condition, or actually unconscious, I thought they said. So we want to keep him in our prayers. Jeff comes from a good Calvert County family and worked here his whole life, so we want to make sure we keep Jeff in our prayers. Remind everybody again, Channel 6 has changed to Channel 1070, so if you go to Channel 6, like Commissioner Gadway's wife, you're not gonna see us. Maybe that's a good reason not to see us. I too attended the Rural Lands Forum on Thursday night, they had six really good speakers, and my cousin Ben Hance spoke, and he's the one talked about kicking crabs and growing up in Calvert County 60 years ago, and really took me back down memory lane, talking about bird hunting and crabbing like that. I'm telling you, it was good times. And we were too young to appreciate how good it was, to be honest.
We used to do that at some point, when he was saying that, you know, where the bay washes into that one little inlet, when he said that reminded me and my brother Jeff.
Yeah. So, you know, people are gonna shoot me, but as a kid, there was so much seaweed and seagrass in the creeks, we would go out there and pull it up, because it would get all wrapped around your legs when you're trying to swim. We actually pulled up all the grass and seaweed, and now I wish I could bring it back, but. I too attended the banquet Saturday night at Prince Frederick, and had a great turnout, and food was excellent, especially the cake. And, let me see.
Was it better than Melanie's?
Close, close, not better, not better, close, close.
Good answer.
So, just remind everybody, tomorrow night at the Southern Community Center, there's gonna be a candidate forum for county commissioners, it starts at 6 o'clock, I think. And then on Thursday night, there's a public hearing at the Hebb on Dears Beach Road for the text amendments that we talked about a little while ago. And I think that's enough out of me today. Commissioner Gadway?
For all the people, Prince Frederick, I just want to let you know, the reason why I didn't say anything is because he said I couldn't. The cake was up there, and we needed to get to the cake, so.
So the cakes at the banquet, as I mentioned, were made by Kelly Frostburger, who works down in the treasurer's office here in the courthouse. So maybe we could start a cake competition amongst county employees.
Hey, there we go.
And look, we got volunteers in the audience.
Al said, bring it.
Are you eating or cooking?
Both.
Oh, Al said, bring it, he can do it.
Yeah, so. Commissioner Williams, do you have a motion for me?
I do, sir. I move that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters, property acquisition, and legal advice pursuant to Sections 3 dash 305, B 1I, B 1II, and B 3, and B 7.
Second. I have a motion and a second for what he said, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. You all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.